So if we could make a start, is it Willie or Roger who's going to lead off please?
Thank you Chair. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Policy and Resources Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act two thousand and three. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the Chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries Chair, so I'll now ask Mr Wardle to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now take a roll call for the minute as indicated and would ask if members could confirm they are present when I call their name. Bailey Sawers.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Lord Provost.
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
Ologies from Bailey Dawson.
Thank you. Councillor Onaklov.
Here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you. Councillor Hunter.
Afternoon, present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts. Bailey Roberts. Mark Lynn is absent and present.
No, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
I just couldn't get my microphone to switch on.
Thank you for confirming. Councillor Rome.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Tolland.
Yeah, hiya, here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Cookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good afternoon, present.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Present.
Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey MacPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you. Councillor Coleman.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Councillor Creighton.
Present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
And finally Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes the roll call. Next items declarations of interest. Let's well notice any declarations from members of the committee to the content of the agenda as it stands. Councillor Flynn, do you wish to make a declaration?
Yeah, just bear in mind the deputations that have been listed. I'm actually a member of Unite. I just want to on the record if that's okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for intimating that. In the being no further declarations, I would like to advise the committee that requests for deputations have been received from Unison. The members from the Douglas community and United Union, is it made to hear the deputations?
Think councillor Malone is wanting to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering whether I have to declare my, I declare a conflict that I'm a trustee of both DCA and leisure and culture Dundee, so I don't know if I've got to declare that because I may come up as a, I don't think I'm in the discussion, so I'll just keep on to that on record.
I think these outside bodies are taking us as read councillor Malone, but thank you anyway.
No, thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
Sorry Bailey Sawers, you clarified the situation with your answer. I was just asking in respect to one organisation, but it's taken his raid. Thanks.
Sorry Willie, back to you.
So Chair, Mr Wardle asked the committee if they were minded to hear the three deputations. Are the committee minded to hear those deputations?
Agreed. Yes, seems we are. So three deputations firstly we have, I'm assuming the deputations are in the meeting. First deputation we have is from Unison and it's Margaret McGuire and Alison Younger. Margaret and Alison here.
Yes. I think Alison's having a bit of a problem with her connection unfortunately, but she is on.
Okay, maybe if you could lead off then Margaret please. You've been here before, you've got up to seven minutes to address the committee and if you can remain in the meeting in case members have questions for you please.
Yep, absolutely. Afternoon ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing Unison the opportunity of speaking at today's budget setting meeting. Public services are yet again being treated as a poor relation. Yet again we find our funding being massively undercut. Vital services are being eradicated with little or no thought to the detrimental effect these cuts are having on our communities. Today I want to focus on report number three eight dash two oh two three redesign of customer services face-to-face provision. Since centralisation of services, our current customer services team have had no choice but to accept additional tasks and over the years this has morphed into an extensive list. The report does not cover half of the services provided by the team. Section four point four point four of the report covers some of the duties, but they have missed a number including garden base permits, access fobs, radar key distribution. These services historically were provided at Dundee House. All services are provided on behalf of other departments within the council. East and West District Offices initially provided face-to-face appointments for council tax and housing benefit queries and applications. Post-COVID management took the decision to provide general customer services from these offices. The reason was due to the cost of living crisis and to enable the public to access an office nearer to their homes and to reduce the financial impact of our most vulnerable customers. It was also thought it would help with those with mobility issues if they could access services nearer to their homes. Less than six months later, a complete U-turn is being proposed by management. Can someone explain to me how, when the cost of living crisis is still at its peak, management can deem these services not necessary? Section four point four point two states that the improved digital service will enhance the customer journey and their experience. That may be true of some, however, ask the ninety-two-year-old hard-of-hearing, partially-blind customer who has never heard of the internet and I think you'll get a different answer completely. Some of our customers who make use of all our services in all three offices do not have access to computers, internet and in some cases phones. We deal on a daily basis with members of the public who live chaotic lifestyles and vulnerable and of course the elderly who rely on face-to-face interactions to be able to understand the forums they are having to complete. Some of these can be very in-depth, lengthy and not user-friendly to a lot of people. Why are you putting unnecessary barriers in the way for our most vulnerable communities? Point four point four point five of the same section highlights that there are currently two full-time equivalent receptionists who provide a first point of contact to anyone attending Dundee House. What is to happen to these staff? Furthermore, how are the staff and visitors going to access Dundee House? There are a variety of public staff and other organisations that visit Dundee House for a variety of reasons. What arrangements are in place to ensure that there is no disruption, barriers put in place? They are not only a meeting greet service, they undertake to assist staff with organising ID badges, photographs etcetera, supply radar keys, but only after the customer has been vetted by them to ensure they qualify. Members of the public also make use of the self-service phones to contact other departments, which is essential for our customers. The report goes on to state that face-to-face interaction has fallen for a number of reasons, and that's in point four point nine. Yet four point eleven shows an increase of one thousand two hundred and ninety-three appointments between quarter four of twenty twenty-one and quarter one of twenty-two twenty-three, and it is even higher between the first two quarters of twenty-two twenty-three. This proposal relies on six full-time equivalent staff reductions to realise the one hundred and forty-one thousand savings. What happens if the six members of staff don't leave in the next financial year? What's plan B? One size fits all does not work. Our customers are not all the same. We need to be providing the best service we can to all. Absolutely, some may prefer to do it online, some may prefer a telephone consultation, but this proposal will hinder the vulnerable and elderly from benefiting from a service local authorities should be providing in whatever shape or forum is the most appropriate for all. Removing the drop in services from the other two offices, what savings are there to be made from doing this? Similarly, not having a robust service within the centre will also be detrimental to our customers. These cuts will undoubtedly have an impact extremely detrimental on those customers who rely on face-to-face interactions to receive the advice and guidance they need and we are not convinced that the delivery of digital services only is the most appropriate way forward. Dundee City Council should prepare themselves for a reduction in income that will completely that will completely show the removal of an effective and efficient face-to-face service. Thank you.
You're on, you can hear.
Any members have any questions for the deputation? Councillor Malone, sorry.
Okay, Maggie, thanks for the intervention about the deputation. And also I'd like to thank Unison workers for the work they've done over the last few years, including during COVID, for the excellent way they've responded to some of the challenges that they faced. I'm concerned a wee bit about what the reaction to the budget that goes through in this particular way is on the remaining staff. I spoke to a number of Unison members and they're basically telling me the mood is rock bottom now, morale is rock bottom. And can we, in your experience, can we continue to deliver a service worthy of calling it a service that's fit for purpose when staff morale is so low?
Thanks councillor Malone. I am not passing the buck here by any shape, manner or means, but customer services isn't my service. Alison is one of the longstanding members of staff within that particular team, so I would like Alison to come in and hopefully answer that. If she can.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yeah. Morale in the team has been at rock bottom for several years now and this came as a massive blow to many of us in the team. You know, the effects of a reduced face-to-face service are far-reaching right across the community, especially to our most vulnerable customers. You know, not everyone has the ability to have family and friends to do everything online and whilst I appreciate online is a great service, we have many elderly, vulnerable customers that just do not have the ability to do that and they don't have family and friends to help them.
Thanks for that. I was trying to tease out what the mood is, what the almost like psychological contract is with the team and you've just reaffirmed or confirmed. What I've been hearing is that morale's at rock bottom and if I are going to provide services that are fit for purpose, you get that through people going the extra mile, not people whose morale is rock bottom. So thank you for that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further indications of questions, so Margaret and Alison, thank you for your deputation and you're obviously welcome to stay for the meeting or leave if you're on preference. Okay, our next deputation is from the Douglas community and we have Mark Nugent and Cara Donald. Mark and Cara here?
Yes.
Okay, so you have up to seven minutes to address the committee and then if you could remain in the meeting in case there's questions, the members please.
Okay. We teach our children it doesn't matter if we have a bigger house, a bigger car or nicer trainers, you can still be whatever you want to be. Money shouldn't dictate the world, so why is it dictating our kids' future by removing the funding from the Big Noise programme? Our children are watching us right now to see if we as adults can resolve this. My name's Mark and I am from the Douglas community. I have four children, three of them are in the Big Noise. Big Noise give children in our community a purpose. It's somewhere for them to learn, to be themselves and to help achieve bigger things in life. The personal touch that Big Noise gives can't be replaced by a music teacher or two. My daughter Caris has been with the programme since the beginning and this has been part of her life and how she has grown up. She has had opportunities that none of us in the community ever had or ever could imagine. Performing the opening of the V and A in the Scottish Parliament, while the big tent in the community was one of the most memorable events. Even though the wind was blowing and the tent was coming off the pegs, the community was together proud of the achievements of their children. That is what it's about. It's about making children in the community feel happy, united and proud to be part of Big Noise. It's also up to four hours a week of after-school care. You can't underestimate what it means for the community. As a parent, you can use this time to do overtime and earn extra money for the household and the knowledge that your children are in a safe environment where they get snacks and hot meals. Without it, people would have less money, less things to do with the children and some children could potentially be now causing trouble. There are children like me who grew up in care and at Big Noise they feel valued, supported with what you offer them as a substitute. The Big Noise staff take time and care to get to know our children and our community. Trust is hard-earned, never underestimate the value of what it means to a community and to young people. The community is coming together like this to pay tribute to continue the funding as it's challenging, changing little people's lives. I know you have financial difficulties, however, if you invest three hundred thousand this year, the charity has pledged to raise the rest of the funding it needs, more than double that. Almost eighty percent of the children who are nursery or primary school in Douglas are part of Big Noise. Over five hundred and fifty children and their families are connected to this. Our children's confidence has grown. They feel better about themselves, they're happier, they have a sense of purpose that seems like good value for money to us. The world has enough hardship and difficulties. Big Noise brings joys, happiness. Wrapped around care and support the families in the community that needs it, please I urge you to make our children proud by listening to what matters to them. I will now hand you over to my fellow community member Cara, Cara, sorry.
Thanks Mark. My name is Cara and I've lived in Douglas for almost twenty years and I have two children. My oldest started the programme five years ago and has grown up with Big Noise as a way of her life. It has been joyful for me to watch her progress to become an accomplished violinist and performer. We are always seeing the next milestone as the older children in the community set a new example of what can be achieved. As a family, we go to more community events than we would have before and my partner takes time off work to attend the Big Noise Christmas show. My daughter attends after-school sessions and the holiday programmes are a big part of her life. Her little sister looks up to her and is waiting for her turn to get her own instrument too. The Big Noise team are passionate and talented people who teach in a way that is fun for kids and we as a community feel part of it as well. Opportunities like this don't come along very often. My daughter was a very shy child who wasn't confident in groups and I watched her confidence build and she now has a united group of friends across the school and community. I feel proud of my daughter and hopeful for her future. Big Noise has opened the world for our children in our community. Mark and I are sharing our own stories, but please remember we represent the carers of hundreds of young people. This past week, members of the community have written to our elected members, the council leader and the children's and family convener. We asked you to come to our community to hear how much Big Noise mean to us, but you didn't. So I will share some of those stories now on their behalf. One parent said, my child was diagnosed with a brain tumour in two thousand and nineteen and as a result is severely sight impaired. Back then, Big Noise came to our house a few times, bringing instruments for him to feel and listen to, always being mindful of the fact he had lost his vision and playing music to cheer him up. During the pandemic, we were shielding, Big Noise came for a garden visit, a garden visits, which meant the world to us. Another parent has said that as a new mum on statutory maternity pay during a cost of living crisis, I'm having to pull on free services offered like baby noise, which are invaluable to me and many others in our community. This service helps with child development and gives parents and carers a safe and social space to meet and share parenting tips. Parenthood can be lonely and stressful at times, so these services are important to the adults as well as the children. Another mum said, one of my sons has behavioural issues. Big Noise is a big part of his life. When he takes part, he is good as gold. His teachers say he concentrates, which has been a big issue for him in the classroom. And I will finish with a note, a quote from a child. Big Noise is the sunshine to me and it always makes me happy. There are more examples like these that we don't have time to share today, but I hope the message from the Douglas community is clear that Big Noise matters to us. We hope you can find the funding to continue supporting this programme. The community is watching, the children are watching and waiting to hear what you decide to do. Please don't let us down. Thank you.
Thank you Cara and Mark for that deputation. So I've got indications of questions from a number of members. So I've got councillor McHugh. Dorothy, first please.
Thank you. I thank you Mark and Cara for taking the time to come along today to let us know how important Big Noise is to you and your families. It's been suggested that the council's instrumental music service is better placed to achieve good outcomes for the young children and young people of Douglas than Big Noise. What's your view on that?
Do you mean just in a classroom with one teacher to thirty children?
Yes.
Completely different.
You can't, there's no personal touch on that. If you've got two teachers or one teacher with thirty children trying to teach different things and different instruments, different songs and levels, it's impossible. You have, Big Noise have got specific and talented needs for every child.
It's also, that's just music. This is hot food, it's social, it's building the community together. We went to met the other children from St Pius that our children are going to go on to high school with. When I was younger, obviously primary schools were rivals and you go to high school feeling like that, whereas these children are already coming together in the community. It's safe spaces. A lot of these kids don't have hot meals. They don't always have someone who's there for them in a kind, loving environment and these teachers go above and beyond. It's completely different to music at school.
And we also know what days a week they do because it's set. So if you wanted to do a little bit extra overtime at work to earn some weekend money for the children, which we do, we know that we could say, well, I can actually do Monday or Thursday or Tuesday and a Friday or whatever day your child goes to Big Noise. You know they're safe. You're not having to pay to look after the babysitter. So at what point is doing overtime actually gives you a little bit extra spending money to do with the kids. Gives them something to do at the weekend, which reduces trouble and stuff as well.
Thank you for sharing that. I can hear the passion and the commitment in your voices. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Billy MacPherson.
Thanks indeed, convener, and grateful thanks to Cara and Mark for bringing alive, I think what, I think a lot of us already knew that Big Noise is a massive positive for the Douglas community and I think quite a number of us in the council want to see that continue and want to see that funding continue. Can I possibly just ask, we had a letter from Nicola Colleen, the Chief Executive Officer of Systema Scotland, back on the twentieth of February and in that letter towards the end, she indicates that at that stage at least, no community members, parents, carers had been consulted by the council about the potential pooling of that funding. I'm just wondering if since then there has been any engagement from the council with you, the parents, the carers in the community, just to get your views and get your input prior to this meeting today?
Absolutely not. I went to our local surgery to meet Christina Roberts. That's the only time I've actually had someone's face-to-face and I got, after telling her I'd had no answers whatsoever, I then got, after that I got a message from Shona Robinson to ask my address to make sure I was in her constituency and that's been it.
Right, okay, that's quite disappointing, but I'm grateful for your response. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I've got councillor Malone, next, sorry.
Mark and Cara, thank you for that deputation. It's one of the most emotional deputations I've listened to and it's time that we as elected officers heard more about the impact of our decisions and the impact it has on communities. Mark, in particular I want to pick up on the points you were making about what we have here is a community project that's got community identity and has got great outcomes and I've actually heard Big Noise Douglas myself and it's great outcomes. The fact that working-class kids have got an alternative to, the alternative to what is basically nothing. And it provides life skills, social skills and lots of other opportunities for the community, including, as you've said, feeding. I'm not from Douglas, I'm from Lochie, which shares a lot of similar issues to the people of Douglas, but I'd like you to tell us about the alternatives. If Big Noise goes, where do the children who benefit from Big Noise go in terms of that kind of social cohesion, community cohesion and personal development that comes through Big Noise Scotland? I don't know what the Douglas area has, but Mark, I think you suggested that people might, that the young people might be more likely to become involved in antisocial behaviour and so Big Noise Douglas is part of that community learning process. So I'm just asking you, because as I said, I don't live in your world, what alternatives are there for that social cohesion, not community cohesion and the development of our children? And I think it was Cara mentioned about somebody learning the violin, becoming accomplished in the violin and representing our communities at the opening of the Scottish Parliament. I can't think of any greater accolade to a community exercise than that. So sorry if that was a long-winded question, but I should just.
I honestly don't believe of anything at the minute I can think of off the top of my head that Douglas or Dundee is general offer for younger people that are in an upper school education, younger people in education. I do believe it's, if we don't do it, I think a lot of kids' social aspects will drop and as you heard, children playing violin. I mean, let's be honest, I'm thirty-five years old and I can't play violin and not many of my friends, in fact, none of my friends can play violin. Half of them are probably never even heard of one. So having an opportunity like this, being so young and being able to do that all through their life has given them opportunities for when they're older. If they don't have it, then as you say, there's, what is there, a park you can play swings on. So until they start pulling trees out and flicking the swings and setting fires, that's really what's going to happen if this gets taken away. The kids are excited to go to Big Noise, like, you know, it's excitement, it's fun, it's, I want to meet this person and this person and rather than being stuck in the house playing on a computer or causing trouble, smoking seems to be going a lot around, you know, it's keeping them identifying good things in life rather than going down the wrong path, which is easily, easily done.
Okay, Mark, thank you very much for that answer. It kind of reflects what I see in my own community that without these interventions, kids have got nothing else left. There's nothing left for kids to do. But I think the educational impact of Big Noise Douglas is far, far greater than some of the other community initiatives we've got. I don't agree that the kids will suddenly revert to pull up trees and set fires to things, but I'm sure that the legacy of Big Noise Dundee will make sure that they're good citizens of our community. but I'm sure that the legacy of Big Noise Dundee will make sure that they're good citizens of our communities. Thank you for that.
Okay, thanks. The next indication I have is from Willie Keenan.
Okay, Mark and Cara, thanks. Thanks very much for your passionate plea. And like the customer service thing earlier, and indeed the Big Noise, I hope that we can change the administration's mind and obviously support the communities in their city going forward. I think that children should go through life without a worry or a care. And, you know, and things should be made available for them to make their life as most pleasant as possible. I'm just wondering what sort of effect it's starting to have as parents and carers within your group start to say, the nasty councillors are taking away your four hours a week or things that are making you happy, you know, are keeping you off computer games and giving you learning and confidence moving forward in the future. Because I think it really concerns me that we burden children far too early in life and they should go through life happy without the worries of finances, whether that's the household budget or finances, whether it's the council cutting the service that delivered directly to them, especially when there's a charitable organisation that's raising most of the funds towards it.
I totally agree with what you just said. Was there a question in that? Sorry.
The question, the question was around how are children reacting to getting that, getting told that what you've got is likely coming from you.
Yeah, they're becoming aware too young that politics can be a negative impact in their life.
There isn't many children that know that how a charity or how finances work, let's be honest, right? A lot of adults don't, so children find it hard. So if we don't get the funding to keep Big Noise and it's taken away from them, all that they know is something that they liked, something that they love and something they've worked really hard to achieve, something's getting taken away. So, and then that's going to knock them down to think, well, why should we achieve and work hard at anything else at life? Because it'll just get taken away anyway.
Well, I want them to be positive about it.
You've got to try and be positive, yes, positive as you can about it. So and because that's encouraging them to be the way they are, it's helping them in so many different aspects of life, not just music. It's life as well, education. Like you say, the parliament opening, V and A. Not many children have experienced that. It's life experience, things they'll never be able to just walk up the streets and do.
Is that answering what you've been?
I mean, I think it helps and I hope it helps other people on the call understand the effect that it's potentially having on children. And admire yourselves coming forward to put the case over for the children in your community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Gavin. Cara and Mark, that's the last question from councillors. So you're welcome to stay on and view the rest of the meeting or take the afternoon off. It's up to yourselves. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Our next deputation is from United Union, Stuart Bearweather. Stuart, you've been here many times before, you know the drill, up to seven minutes to address the committee and then our opportunity for questions from members.
Thank you very much councillor Sawyer, and thanks to all the councillors for allowing me to speak on behalf of the United Union Dundee City Council branch. We're here again. You alluded to the fact that I've been here many times and it's one of the key points I want to make. The total deduction from Dundee City Council from next year's budget will be eighteen million and that adds to a significant amount, over a hundred and fifty million over the last decade or so. We've turned up on an annual basis to make deputations to the council for fourteen years now. Often it's been me, it's sometimes been others. The stories that people have indicated, have shared have been similar over that period of time. And for brevity, we agree entirely with what Unison were saying in the earlier deputation. And we want to capture some of what you've just heard from Big Noise, who are much more eloquent than me. Although it is important to state that Unite Dundee Trade Union Council, other unions, Unite members from DVVA and the voluntary sector were in the square this afternoon. They were in the square because they wanted to publicly indicate that they didn't want the cuts to continue. The cuts are in this year's budget and the process of cuts year on year, because as well as the eighteen million in total this year, we've promised something similar next year. And I think as you've heard very eloquently again from Big Noise, what we're seeing has a real impact on our communities. Yes, for young people, but that dismay that is felt by young people and children is also felt by citizens across the city and by the members of our trade union. And it has an effect, it has an effect on the service that folk can deliver and it has an effect on people's capacity to engage with the services we provide. And we were in the square and we were in the square because we couldn't take part in a deputation in the same fashion we have in the past. We couldn't come publicly to the city chambers. We couldn't be in the public gallery. We couldn't have a face to face conversation with elected officials and that's a drawback. And there may be perfectly good reasons why you've chosen to do that, but it does epitomise the distance, the social distance that there is between the decision makers and those that are impacted by the decisions. So we have the paper in front of us. It talks about cuts to bus services, talks about law nursery going. It talks about food banks, it talks about Grey Lodge and other third sector organisations. And our members that are in the coal side ward, we might have youngsters at law nursery and they might need to get on the number ten and they might have a parent that goes to Grey Lodge. And that plus the deduction of thirty three posts from the city council's complement has stress on strain, stress and strain on their daily lives. So both as citizens and as workers in the Dundee City Council, folk are seeing yet another year of cuts having a real impact on them. So we think that you'll maybe surprise to hear that the city council, all its councillors should take a different view on the budget and reject all the cuts. We think that they should do that in tandem with a deputation to the Scottish Parliament and if required, the deputation to the Westminster Parliament. We think Dundee needs a different approach. Dundee needs to move in a different direction. When we were organising for today's event in the square and today's deputation, we were speaking to our members. Some of our members were saying Dundee is dying. Dundee is dying. That gives me no pleasure saying that, but that was the direct quote from some of our members. So today in the square, it was restated that we should take action. We've done two things from today. The trade union movement in Dundee has started to take collections for Grey Lodge. And the trade union movement in Dundee is inviting all citizens, all elected politicians to join with them on a demonstration on Saturday, the sixth of May, to say that our city should be moving in a different direction and that there should be an end to the cuts. Thank you.
Thanks Stuart. Couple of indications of questions. So councillor Malone first please.
First of all, I'd like to agree with Stuart that it's probably he's been here too many times in the past decade talking about the same things as we experienced the cuts that have led to diminution of our services. I'm going to ask you the same question I asked of the Unison delegate because you're obviously very much closer to the people who are expected to deliver excellent services, but who are continually seeing the reduction in the resourcing of those services. And at some point, the impact has to affect people's physical health, mental health. Work intensification is growing and how do you see the impact of work intensification on your individual members? But also in their ability to deliver the kind of services that we hope as a council, that we are delivering to the best of our ability.
Thank you councillor Malone. There's two aspects to the question. The cuts and the impact of the cuts year on year are having a negative effect on members of staff across the council, certainly members of Unite the Union. It's no secret to say that we're constantly in conversation with the council's HR department about mental health and stress and that's the biggest contributor to absence. And to their credit, the HR department are taking the issue seriously. It is now moving towards epidemic proportions within the council. The stress has two manifestations, one on the person themselves, but also on their, they're sad at the fact that they can't deliver the services they would like to deliver. And those two things compound. But, and that's to do with our members, but you're also asked what about the relationship between Dundee City Council staff and the rest of the community. Again, I don't think I'm sharing any great secrets. I was in a conversation with a senior police officer yesterday and they were saying they're concerned that there might be parts of our community that we begin not to be able to engage with. Now, there's a lot of mites in there, but it's a concern that that discussion's even taking place. The police officer was suggesting that people feel that there's a distance between them and service provision and that makes the job harder. So you've got stressed out staff, stressed out members of public, a stressed out relationship. And a very interesting conversation, very important conversation happening as part of the last deputation. People know about this. People know about the cuts and it has a psychological impact on them. Our city has fifty plus thousand people in the Scottish index of multiple deprivations, worse twenty percent. That's bound to have an impact on our city. Our members live in those communities as well. So it's a difficult situation and I don't think the cuts help and I don't think year on year cuts help. And that's why I'm asking for a rethink. Fully accept it's that, but that's why I'm asking for a rethink. Thank you.
Thanks Stuart. Question from councillor Tolland. If you want, please.
Thanks Cabeana. Hi Stuart, thanks very much for that. I just want to pick up on something that you were talking about in terms of communication and sometimes the feeling of distance. Can I ask, did any of the opposition bring forward their alternative budgets to the trade unions for discussion and review?
There were discussions where councillors, yes, from other parties, other than the administration.
And they reviewed your budget, they reviewed their budget with you directly?
They, you can ask them, ask myself. There wasn't, the Liberal Group, the Labour Group, the Conservative Group didn't have specific discussions with the trade unions about the detail of alternative budget proposals. They had broader discussions than that amongst the one or two councillors that we spoke to.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that Stuart.
Okay, thanks. Got councillor Curden next.
George. Thanks Chair. Thanks Stuart. We're back to your feelings on the cuts. You mentioned about forecasting, there's a real, you believe the forecast, Unite's forecast for next year, there will be cuts. Is it fair to say, looking at third sector or third party payments, we see DVVA and the firing line Grey Lodge, as you mentioned today, and also RASAC. Do you believe that there's real fear for the third voluntary sector? What's lying ahead in future years for twelve months from now to where we are moving forward?
The simple answer to that is yes. Unite organisers in the public sector, private sector and the voluntary sector, our voluntary sector members are already in discussion with us about the impact of this year's budget and the assumed impact of next year's budget. It doesn't, again, doesn't give me any pleasure, but people are wise enough to recognise that what's happening with this year's budget is only a signal of what might happen in the future if there's no change of course.
Thanks George.
Thank you.
Okay, and next councillor Shears, Pete.
Thanks Willie. And thanks for your deputation Stuart as well. And thanks for letting me come along on Tuesday night to kind of give you an overview of the Labour alternative budget. My question would be on when you said Dundee is dying, as you know, there's been ten years of cuts here. I wonder if you could kind of give us an overview of what's happened in those ten years as a direct result of cuts? What kind of impact has that had on communities that would make people say that Dundee is dying?
Folk will know that we've talked about the stress and strain on services over the years and that folk have pointed to changes in their own communities, the six wards predominantly that are in the S I M D areas and the threats to provision, curtain community centre are, the hub library on Pakerah Road would be amongst those. But the specific reference to Dundee dying was about the concern the trade union members for the commercial sector. So not necessarily a connection you would automatically assume to be made, but folk were talking about Reform Street, folk were talking about the High Street, folk were talking about the fact that shops are closing and the like. And what they were talking about is the impact of cuts on the wider economy. And I guess that they were suggesting that that's a barometer for Dundee's future. So if Dundee can't sustain a High Street, if Dundee can't sustain secondary business districts with shops closing, folk are worried for the future. So, so, so this, trade unions have a role. Our primary role is defence of our members' interests, but we also have a civic role. And we are saying, this is about Dundee. We're looking for allies. We want to turn this around. We need to go in a different direction. Our city can't continue like this. Fifty three thousand people in the Scottish index, multiple deprivations, worse twenty percent. The danger is there'll be more. That's what people were referring to. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
And councillor Flynn please.
Yeah, thanks Cabeana. I won't touch upon the last thing that was just said. I think I'll focus on the actual employees themselves and possibly look at some number of things that actually, there's a lot of reasons why employees get stressed etcetera, as you would probably agree with Stuart. And one of the feelings I think is the importance of feeling part of the organisation and growing within the organisation itself. Now, training is very much an important part of this and giving people belief that they can actually advance within the organisation. Can you maybe give us some insight of what unions feel about with regards to training within Dundee City Council and the threat that might be if that was withdrawn in any way? How that impacted on the individuals knowing that they would have no possibility of advancement? Issues with regards to their possible health and safety issues, for example, would that not cause them even more stress?
I think you raise an important point councillor Flynn. So formal training would play a big part in people feeling that they could develop within the role and feel valued. So that would be the case in relation to formal training, but it would also be the case in relation to day to day support that they have from their managers and indeed senior management. So the continual threat of cuts year on year makes people scared about their future. It makes people reluctant to engage in formal training and it creates a situation that doesn't allow people to contribute to their utmost. So yes, it's good to have formal training, but it needs to be in the context of an organisation that's sustainable and grown.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. I think, thanks very much for that. I think it just acknowledges the fact that training is vital with any organisation and Dundee City Council ain't any different. So thanks for the response to that.
Thank you.
Okay Stuart, I'm not seeing any indications of any more questions from members. So again, you're happy to stay for the meeting or, but as you wish. So again, you're happy to stay for the meeting, or part as you wish.
Thank you.
So if we could move on, please. We've had four budget motions from the administration and three amendments from Labour, Lib Dem and Conservatives. I'll ask that these are circulated. I'm not sure if all members have had a chance to read all four propositions. I'm relaxed about having a short deputation, not deputation, a short adjournment, if members so wish, or we can push on. Fraser, you're nodding it.
Could I suggest just a short adjournment, just so that we can see what is circulated? Obviously, we have had sight, but I think it would be sensible, just a short adjournment, maybe two or three minutes.
Well, I was going to be a bit more generous and suggest we adjourn at four o'clock.
That's perfectly reasonable. Thanks, convener.
Okay, we'll see you all shortly. That's four o'clock, so welcome back, everyone. Hope you all had time to digest each other's motion and amendments. So I'm going to invite questions from members about various propositions being put forward. So get indications of any questions, please. Right. Councillor Anderson first, please.
Thank you, convener. I think I've got two questions that might actually be three questions. My understanding is that both the Liberal and the Liberal Democrats in the Labour Party are proposing cashing in on a one-off flexibility this year and taking that 3.8 million, and that they're both also talking about borrowing. And the cost of borrowing to fund the spending this year would be 271,000, but that's 271,000 for 25 years. So it would cost 6.7 million to repay the borrowing for the spend this year. So I think the first question is, given the current pressure on the revenue account and what we know will be increasing pressure over the next couple of years, what's the professional view of officers about cashing in this one-off flexibility and borrowing at this time? Do they consider that to be prudent? And my second question is around layers, because I simply didn't understand that in the Liberal Democrat budget. They were talking about selling layers and obtaining, I think it was 96,000 pounds. But my understanding is that the money from the layers should be used to maintain the grounds going forward. So I just wanted to find out what would happen if we sold them and then spent the money, what would happen in future years?
Robert, are you able to pick up these questions, please?
Thank you, convener. So first of all, my view would be that if we're going to use balances or one-off money to balance the budget on any significant sale scale, sorry, that's not going to be financially sustainable. And Section 10 of the Budget Report sets out how the budget gap, we think, over the next four years is going to be around about 42 million pounds. So anything that we use as one-off saving or anything that we do to increase the revenue budget going forward is going to make the savings that we've got to find next year potentially more challenging. Members will know that when we looked at the capital programme last November, we considered whether or not to undertake additional potential borrowing. And our advice at that time was that because of the pressure on revenue and because of the increased interest rates that we are seeing, we didn't recommend that. And if you remember, we reviewed the programme based on staying within the existing resources. So that remains my view. It's important that the council sets a budget which is financially sustainable. In relation to layers, we have a sum of money set aside, 96,000 pounds. Historically, the income from the sales was held in perpetuity, apologies. And we used to invest it in bonds. It's just held as balances at the moment. So if we, and the income earned on those balances goes towards running the service. So if we spend the 96,000 pounds, then we'll forego the income in interest that we would have earned on that sum of money. In the last few years, that's generally been less than 3K. So it's not a significant sum of revenue in the scheme of the council's budget. I hope that helps, convener.
Thanks for that.
The line of quest.
Councillor Eller, are you okay with that answer? Yeah?
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful, especially the explanation about the layers as well. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. I've got councillor Flynn next, please.
Yeah, thanks, convener. I think it's fallen on clearly from the question to Mr Fairweather with regards to training and the importance of training to the staff within the council, not just for their personal development, but their welfare and the opportunities to move forward, whether it be for health and safety, et cetera. And he acknowledged the fact that the importance of training within the actual budget was really important to his members and probably other parts of the council itself. So I'd like to get some, maybe some comment from officers on what would happen if there was, in one of the proposals from the Labour Party, for example, there's 169,000 pounds worth of reductions in training, similar to last year's budget, I must note. So they've obviously got a continual policy to cut back on training, as I would say. So maybe officers would like to give me some insight and give the members some insight on what that type of cut would have and the impact on staff and staff morale, never mind staff quality of work and their personal development going forward.
Robert, I think that's you again, please.
Thank you, convener. So the training budget covers both essential training to meet registration and professional needs as well as the development of the workforce. I think if we're looking to reduce that budget, then it's likely we'll have to focus increasingly just on strategy of registration requirements. And that means there's a risk that we'll invest less in our workforce. And that'll impact on our ability to recruit staff and to retain the best talent, apologies. Now, we know it's a competitive workplace out there, so that's obviously a risk to the council in the current environment.
I just thank you for the response. And I think to acknowledge the fact that they're trying to get, as we looked at P and R over the last 12 months, are trying to get places filled over that period. Obviously, training plays a vital role within that for the personal development, hence it might put people off coming to the council. So thanks very much for that response.
Okay. Councillor Rome next, please.
Thank you, convener. My question's for the Section 95 officer. Now, obviously, every councillor here has great ambitions for Dundee, and the administration has put a lot of effort and indeed a lot of resource into continued upgrading their schools, for example, into the new school in the Eastern Community Campus that will be forthcoming. So my question is, in terms of borrowing for capital investment, what are your thoughts on the current borrowing? And if we could increase this, any proposals to increase this are going to find difficulties given the cost of the construction inflation. So just wondering what your thoughts are on whether it's prudent to continue borrowing and increasing borrowing, indeed, given construction inflation at the moment?
Robert, please.
Thank you, convener. I think probably I've largely covered this in my previous answer for councillor Anderson. But essentially, that comes down to the requirements of the provincial code, which would be considered, can we afford additional borrowing? And when we looked at the programme, we agreed that we'd retain it within its existing scope because the additional cost of borrowing would add to the revenue pressures ahead of us. So any decision to borrow for more investment would require to be met this year and in future years from within the revenue budget, and that would require choices about how that was funded.
Okay, thanks. Stephen, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, I've got councillor Tolland next.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question regarding the Labour's Alternative Budget. There is just over a million pound in savings, and that's including things like repairs and maintenance, cleaning costs, facility structural, cyclical maintenance and so forth. I just want you, could you please give us an outline of what the impact of those kind of cuts would be?
Robert, is that one for you or is that for Robyn?
I can have a start, if that's okay, convener. I think that if any reduction in service budgets is going to create a risk that there'll be an overspend if essential expenditure has to go forward, exactly what the consequences are would depend on the particular line that you were asking about, councillor, and the extent of any budget pressure that fell. So if you take repairs and maintenance, we know that that's an area that can be a challenge for the council. And any additional demand for service, if the budget is reduced, will create a pressure within the council's overall budget.
Robyn, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Many thanks, Chair. I would highlight that there are three types of maintenance on properties. And I think it's fair to say that all are at the end of the range that I would anticipate for the extensive range of property that we do have within the council. My recommendation to members would be to avoid further reductions in property maintenance, unless it's accompanied by a reduction in the numbers of property that the council operates. The three different types would be health and safety essential contracts. They would relate to things like Legionella or other testing, fire alarms, et cetera, et cetera. Then the second category would be cyclical maintenance, so ensuring that key components are painted or inspected on a regular programme of work. And then finally reactive maintenance, which is the typical one-off things that happen in any building during the course of its working life.
Okay, thanks for that. Siobhan, you okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, no, that's absolutely fine. It seems a wee bit of just needing to think a bit more in terms of any unexpected incidents in the future where the cuts might kind of negatively impact. Thanks very much. So that's useful.
Thanks. I've got councillor Lynn next.
Yeah, thank you, convener. As you'll know, we've worked long and hard over many months in coming up with this budget and with the proposed increase in council tax, which we're putting forward today. And that increase, I believe, last time I checked, although I may be wrong, we were still in the lower half in terms of council tax increases for the whole of Scotland. But my question really is about the proposal in the, well, all three other budgets, Labour, Lib Dem and Conservative, which are all proposing a lower increase in council tax. So my question to officers would be, could they explain the effects of a lower council tax increase on the budget in future years? Thank you.
Robert, please.
Thank you, convener. I think the important thing to understand with council taxes, the cumulative effect of any increases. So any decision that you made this year is obviously going to be made in the light of the particular circumstances that face this year. But there isn't any other opportunity to catch up. So a relatively lower council tax for this year will increase the council tax base less, and a higher increase will give you a bigger increase for next year. Obviously, there's a range of factors you'll want to take into account when thinking about council tax. And a key one, obviously, that you'll have in mind will be the current rate of inflation and what that looks like in terms of services and how that affects the proportion of services that are funded by council tax.
Thank you.
I've got councillor Ilnacqua next.
Thank you. Hi. Yeah, so in both Labour and Lib Dem budget proposals, there did seem to be a huge cut from the repairs and renewal budget of just over 1.3 million. Just wondering an officer's opinion on that amount of money in terms of what would be the risk and the impact of that huge cut?
I think that was just the Liberal Democrats' budget, but take the...
Oh, my apologies. My first budget, so I get...
Perhaps another adjournment is needed.
No, no, I'll soldier on. Don't worry.
I think we can move on. Who wants to address that?
I can manage.
Renewals and repair funds?
Convener?
Robert, please.
I can set out the position with the repairs and renewal fund is currently stands just over 3.2 million. 9.9 of that relates to the HRA, and that leaves 3.3 million, which relates to general fund services. 1.7 million of that is committed, so there's 1.6 million in the repairs and renewals fund, which is uncommitted, which is available to meet expenditure. We have been holding it against unforeseen, unexpected expenditure that we might have to meet. Clearly, if a budget decision is made to allocate that to use it now, that will reduce the amount that's available for unexpected property costs. And I think we're all mindful that we have been faced with some of those in the past period.
Okay, thanks. Robyn, is there anything you'd want to add to that?
No, nothing to add, Chair. Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Willie, can I just come in? So to clarify, that would then leave expenditure for urgent repairs and things that come up, like a school roof being blown off, for example? What would that leave the budget as, the final, the cost, if we took that much out?
I think it depends which amendment you're looking at. I think there are two different proposals, councillor Ilnacqua. But I think there's 1.6 that's uncommitted. I think one of the proposals is about 1.4. That would leave something just over 200,000 in the fund. And I haven't got the figure. And the other one's 283. So I think that's the Liberal proposal. The Conservative proposal, I think, takes out 283. So that would leave about 1.3 million left in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Truchshank next. Let's make the point, councillor Truchshank. It's just questions at the moment. There'll be plenty of scope for comments later on in the meeting.
Well, I suppose it's a comment leading to a question, convener.
I want you go.
Thank you. On my way to a hospital appointment this morning, I was driving in the car and the radio came on, and councillor Alexander came on, basically dissing the Labour Group's budget. I suppose the question is, we have worked hard with officers of the council, the same officers that the SNP administration has worked at. So in his comments, when he said, you know, he didn't know where we put the figures from, and we won't make it, is he saying that the officers have given us good information? Thank you.
Well, I don't think that's really a question for officers, to be fair. So I think we'll just move on to your colleague councillor Shears. And Pete, I see you've put in the chat that Dorothy, if you want to ask a question, so we'll come to her in a moment. But we'll take yourself first, please.
Thanks, convener. I was wondering if officers could tell me what impact the administration's proposed cuts to the Community Regeneration Funds would have on communities?
Is that for Elaine?
Convener, I think it's based of Andrea Calder answers that question.
Okay.
So any cut obviously has implications, but having had a detailed look at what we've spent in the past, there is always a kind of underspend each year. So at the moment, we reckon that there's about 100,000 pounds underspent. So if that was to continue kind of year on year, and we take the 50,000 out, if we can bring in extra funding, we think that gap could be closed. So hopefully, there would be limited impact. We've spent a lot of time looking at the potential impacts, and we feel that there is other ways that that could be mitigated going forward.
Could I have a follow-up, please?
Of course.
What other ways would you get funding for the Community Regeneration Fund? Is it something that's been done before? Do we know if it's easily available?
Yep. So there's lots of external funding, so awards for all and big lottery funding. That's just a couple of examples. There's lots of other funding from Robertson's and other big trusts. So those applications have been streamlined over Covid, so they're a lot easier. So there is also an officer that has been employed from funding that was made available last year in DVVA, and they're going to be working with community groups. So there'd be a bit of a focus on how to do good applications and support about any data that was needed to make the best application. So we think that that 50,000 should be easily kind of made up through those other funds, as long as there's a bit of support there for the groups to make those applications.
Andrea, could you maybe remind the committee about the Dundee Climate Fund, please?
Yeah, so the Dundee Climate Fund is obviously another fund that has been implemented, so that's 750,000. So the process is open at the moment for the bidding. So that was the first pot, which was about half that funding. So that funding is also available going out to communities. And again, obviously, there's the youth fund as well. So there's other pots of money that are available for people to bid into over that next year as well as subsequent years.
Thanks for that. Next question's from Bailey Keenan. Kevin? Kevin, you're on mute.
I might just decide to put a late amendment into my budget proposals to leave a wee bit of more money in training, to train the SNP councillors on how to look at a budget and understand it. Because obviously, some of the questions that were being asked about repairs and renewable reels funding, general fund balances, and what would happen if a roof came off a school would be an issue for me. Anyway, the question for officers is, as a section 95 officer has given the okay to our budget, does he believe it is workable next year? And can he give the committee an understanding of the remaining repairs and renewals fund, the amount that has grown in the general fund balance, the amount that has grown in the insurance fund, and the amount of Covid recovery money that still remains uncommitted for this council? Because there is no need to make cuts like you're making when these balances are at the levels that they're at.
I think there were some questions in the middle of that for you, Robert.
Thank you, Convenor. I'm satisfied, and colleagues have worked closely with all groups to put together budgets that are competent in terms of meeting the requirements of setting a legal budget for the council. The current position on balances is set out in the Revenue Monitoring Report that was circulated, but we didn't have time to discuss on Monday night of this week. I'm happy to answer any specific questions on it, Convenor.
I would be happy for officers to tell the figures that are available in repairs and renewals, the additional that's in the general fund balance, and what the insurance fund, normally they decide at a million pounds how much there is going to be there now, and how much there will remain in the Covid recovery fund this year.
So I think the renewal and repair fund's been covered already. Robert, you have come across on the other points Bailey Keenan's raising?
Convenor, I'm just checking. I haven't got the figure off the top of my head. It's 1. something million in the insurance fund. I'll come back to you in a second, if that's okay, Convenor?
Of course.
So the general fund balance has grown as well?
Check. Convenor, if I may?
Yeah, of course.
So at the moment, we're forecasting the general fund unallocated balance at the end of the year will be 11.8 million. That compares with policy requirement to keep 8.3 million.
Covid recovery?
Convenor, we're just trying to get the information that Bailey Keenan's requested. It's requiring us to go back some previous paperwork, as we don't have that information to hand, but we are looking at it at present.
That's fine, thank you.
Convenor, Paul has the information now in response to Bailey Keenan's questions.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Can confirm that the current projection on the Covid reserve remaining at the end of March 23 is 13.3 million pounds. In addition to that, the insurance fund as at the 31st of March 2022 was 1.5 million pounds.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Moving on, councillor McHugh, please. Laurie?
Thank you. I'd like to take us back to the deputation that we heard from Big Noise this afternoon. I have a couple of questions for officers, or one question specifically for officers. We heard that cutting funding for the Big Noise project would have a devastating impact on this disadvantaged community. Could officers comment, please, on how they see, how they expect to achieve equivalent outcomes with the instrumental music service compared to what is offered by Big Noise, considering, as we all understand, we're not talking about a level playing field here?
Audrey?
Thank you, Convenor. I would take you back to the January report, which highlighted the progress of our own instrumental music service in Dundee, and actually points out that, you know, as opposed to 500 so children being supported through Big Noise, we have ranging up to almost 4,000 children being supported by our own instrumental music service. As things stand just now, we walked away from the two primary schools, we withdrew these services, because we didn't want to be stepping on toes, and there was the sensitivities around both our instrumental music service and Big Noise working in the two primary schools in Douglas. So we stepped away, including other services as well. So we have more than capacity in our instrumental music service to move back in to the two primary schools that we're discussing. And we also would then pick up the after-school care again, because that would also be something that we withdrew, because they were offering a different model. And also, we have family workers who could support families in the community, as we do across our other city schools.
Great, thanks. Moving on, councillor Alexander?
Thanks very much, Convenor. I think, first of all, we all find this process really stressful. I don't think there's any need to be childish or juvenile in terms of some of the comments that have been made. My question relates to forecasts. So we all know that we're dealing with some significant financial challenges and pressures in this budget. We know that that's true of all local authorities across the board. Edinburgh just set their budget this morning, I believe. Orkney have done the same today. So can I ask officers to provide an insight into the outlook for coming years? Because I think it's really important to emphasise that whilst we set annual budgets, it's with an eye on future years. So can officers perhaps articulate some of the issues that we see on the horizon, and how we will, obviously, or what we will need to do in order to address them going forward? And Convenor, if you'll really indulge me for one moment, just to respond very briefly to councillor Kriechank, that recording was before you sent your budget. So I hadn't seen any information. It was recorded at nine o'clock yesterday morning. You didn't send me your budget until 10.48, just to clarify.
Thanks for that. Robert, highlights, if that's the right word, of the medium-term financial strategy?
Well, thank you, Convenor. There's probably four areas that we are mindful are creating cost pressures for us going forward. The principal and the most significant one is around pay, where the costs of pay driven by inflation that we've seen over the last year or so are significant, and that's probably half of the pressure that we are facing. We face significant rises in energy prices. There is some evidence that those are starting to tail off, and that's one of the consequences. In terms of inflation, we've also seen that CPI inflation applied to the public finance contracts that we've got, and that's a significant cost. And last but not least, we've seen a, because of the way funding is across Scotland, our share of the Scottish distribution of funding is going down, as evidenced by the floor. So we've seen small reductions in grant funding. So there are the four big things. Within the budget, we are also continuing to manage pressures that arise year on year, and details of those are obviously set out in the revenue monitoring that comes before you.
Thanks. John, you okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we've got a different person.
Thanks. Thanks, Convenor. A question for the director of corporate services. But just before I do, given some of councillor Alexander's comments in the press about fanciful, wishless, undemocratic, ridiculous proposals, perhaps he's the last person who should be talking about childish comments at the moment. But my question to the director of corporate services, because something slightly got lost in the complicated, and I'm grateful to officers for the response to Bailey Keenan, which did actually indicate just a level, it has to be said, of general fund balances that we have at the minute. So therefore, the sky is not going to fall in, no matter which proposal is accepted today. But the point I just want to tease out, because Robert said it in part of a lengthy reply, and that was that officers will confirm, and could Mr Emmett confirm, that whatever preferences are that are decided today, they are all legitimate, all options that are before us today are decisions for the council to take that have been deemed legal and competent in the view of officers. Could Mr Emmett please confirm that? And specifically, can he confirm that it's a perfectly legitimate road for the council to take to make use of the Loans Fund principal repayment facility? Thank you.
Elaine Person, I'll remind you that competency is in the gift of the chair. I'm sure Mr Emmett will confirm that all the proposals, or Mr Many, if he's in the call, that the proposals are legally competent, as whether they're fiscally literate is perhaps more the pointed question. So moving on, Bailey Scott, please. Derek?
Sorry, that's it. I'd like to ask a question about the decision that's going to be taken today to remove the subsidised registered bus services from financial year 2024/25. The report mentions mitigating circumstances, which is to liaise with the bus operators to consider potential changes to the commercial network. As far as I'm aware, we liaise with the bus operators all the time to try and fill gaps that are there for social need. And taking away these services will cause huge difficulties to people who will be left out of a bus service. So I'd like to know what different type of liaising is going to go on with the bus operators that hasn't already gone on to try and fill these gaps that are going to be recreated. The liaising previously brought about these subsidised services. So I'd really like to know what else is going to be done to fill the gap.
Robin?
Chair, many thanks for that. I think everyone will be aware, over the past couple of years, that the bus network has been very, very dynamic, and there is constantly change there. And we obviously, as councillor Scott has highlighted, we do liaise very closely with the bus company or the bus companies around route options. But it's clear that there's been a frustration about the fact that routes and timetables have been changing consistently during the pandemic and since the pandemic. I'll ask Mr McNorton to come in and talk in a little bit more detail about that. But just to highlight, I was returning by bus today, and I discovered a new bus service which hadn't existed two or three months ago. So there is constant flux, and I do believe that negotiations with the bus company may allow some of these gaps to be filled. But Ewan, can I ask you to come in, please?
Yeah, thanks very much. It's true to say that we do continuously liaise with the bus companies, and our format for liaison with bus companies wouldn't be altered. As Mr Preswood does make clear, though, there has been a lot of changes since the subsidised bus networks come in. There isn't significantly likely to be any mass filling the gaps by the commercial network. The bus services remain uncommercially viable, the ones that are subsidised. So we wouldn't see any significant filling of gaps. However, there are some aspects of routes which, using detailed information, may lead to adjustments, potential route extensions. But we wouldn't foresee there being any significant filling of the routes which are currently subsidised.
Okay, Derek, you want to come back in, or? Okay, thanks. Councillor McGurvan?
Thanks, Chair. Question to officers about third-party payments and the integrated impact assessment that's attached in relation to these cuts. I find it very vague. We have distinct lack of real detail within these assessments. All we see is no impact, no impact, no impact. Officers, I would like to see further information or detail from officers about how are these cuts going to impact on the local communities? I'm looking at, for example, the Grey Lodge. They've got toddlers playgroups. They do projects for the elderly, youths, kids, activities. If these are all, they're going to have, some of that is going to have to be cut, because they're facing in a 20% plus deduction in their turnover for a year. So there has to be some kind of impact, DVVA as well, RASAC. So how is it we result in an impact assessment saying there ain't no impact? So if officers could maybe provide more clarity with regards to what they deem the impact for local communities in Dundee?
Is that Elaine?
Yes, thank you, Convenor. Just to confirm what we have outlined within the report is that both the DVVA and Grey Lodge do have significant reserves that they can call upon, well in excess of the savings that have been proposed through this report. So in terms of the immediate impact, then there would be no impact. However, we would certainly work with the organisations to look at securing alternative funding. And there are certainly more funding sources available now than there have ever been for voluntary sectors and third sectors. So we certainly work with the team and make sure that we can help them to access those funds. In relation to RASAC, that is not about the running of the service. That's in relation to the 16 days of activism. And again, there are sources of funding that would be made available from other sources to support the 16 days, and we would actively work with them to do that.
Can I get a, I'm not seeing in the dialogue, Elaine, where that says that in the impact assessment, if we're going to work with them. It doesn't say that in the assessment. Have I missed something?
I'm sorry, councillor McGurvan. It does say within the body of the report that we would be working with these organisations to source alternative sources of funding. If I can draw your attention to 4.2 in the report, third sector organisations of charitable status and are eligible to apply for external funding through grant aid and relevant trusts. So we would certainly be working with them to do that. I hope that'd be assured, sir.
Yeah, so we'll be working with them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more indications of questions to officers. Kind of last call? Nope. Okay, so we'll move on to the formal part of the meeting now. I'll be moving, surprisingly, the administration budget. I want to start by thanking members of the public who took part in the recent budget consultation. For 500 people to the time to complete the survey, and the responses have helped to shape our spending priorities. Budget consultation is just one of the ways for making sure that the views of citizens are heard. Just last month, we launched Dundee's Voice, a new digital tool for public engagement that we hope will become one of the main channels for dialogue with our citizens and provide another way for communities to influence what happens in the city. One of the first uses of Dundee Voice is to let people vote on bids to the Dundee Climate Fund, the UK's first council-led green participatory budgeting initiative, which invites residents to make decisions about projects designed to raise awareness of climate change and reduce carbon emissions. We have also launched new community plans for each ward following extensive engagement on community needs and aspirations, and have agreed a new locality leadership scheme to drive the delivery of these plans. Just to mention, one example of such local delivery is delighted that last year saw the opening of Our Place Douglas Community Park, a brilliant example of the council working in partnership with local community representatives to improve their environment. We're also engaging with stakeholders on an ambitious 30-year vision for the regeneration of the city centre. Policy and Resources Committee receives a report every year on improvements to services that have been made through listening to the views of service users. Last year's highlights included providing home deliveries for free period products, making the website for the National Entitlement Card more user-friendly, bringing forward the timing of the fuel well scheme, and inviting parents and young people to make their voices heard about East End Campus. Our new policy to support people affected by domestic abuse in council housing reflected the views of those with lived experience, while we launched a corporate TikTok account in response to feedback about best ways to interact online with younger audiences. During the past year, we launched both the new city plan and council plan. These strategic plans are built in engagement with local communities and include three key priorities for the next few years: to reduce child poverty and inequalities in incomes, education and health; to deliver inclusive economic growth; and to tackle climate change and reach net zero emissions by 2045. Already made good progress on these priorities in the past year. Already made good progress on these priorities in the past year. On reducing poverty and inequalities, the third phase of Fuel Well continued to assist thousands of people with their energy costs as well as providing advice on income maximisation, debt and employability. And it's just one range of support payments we've administered during the cost of living crisis. We've continued to support families through action on the cost of the school day. For example, through making breakfast and fruit snacks readily available, subsidised trips including primary seven residentials, cheaper uniform suppliers, version of PE kit and non-stigmatising approaches to fundraising. We've also continued to use pupil equity funding from the Scottish Government to help reduce the poverty-related attainment gap. For example, we're providing learning resources and improving digital technology. In the past year, a notable improvement in the literacy and numeracy attainment of care experienced secondary pupils was highlighted. And we saw the highest ever percentage of care experienced pupils enter positive destinations after school. We also continue to support young carers at home, in school and in the community, choosing voluntary young carer ambassadors in every high school, producing peer education resources and introducing peer support groups for young carers in all secondary schools. We've also promoted and seen good take up of the scheme which allows free bus travel for thousands of young people under 22. On delivering inclusive economic growth, we celebrated the 100th local employer to sign up to pay the real living wage. And Dundee is, sorry, Dundee's Living Wage Action Group was recognised for its leadership in the Living Wage Champions Awards. Discover Work, our local employability partnership, developed its new strategy and action plan and reported that more than 33 people every month have been helped into a new job, training or education by Dundee's Employability Pathway programmes since 2019. Tackling climate change, as touched on earlier, we launched the new Climate Fund to help community projects which will run for four years. It's a total of £750,000 available over two funding rounds. Council continues to reduce its own carbon footprint with a range of energy efficiency projects, realising significant financial savings as well as saving as in carbon emissions. Plans are remade to turn Bell Street Car Park into a low-carbon transport hub. Dundee has been recognised in 122 cities across the globe that are taking bold leadership and environmental action and transparency. The charity CDP gave the city an A rating based on actions been taken to tackle climate change. Just 19 UK cities achieved their highest rating with Dundee Rendrout only Scottish recipients. In addition to the three policy priorities for the city, the council plan also commits us to build resilient empowered communities and design a modern council. Excuse me. Much that we achieve in Dundee is due to effective partnership working. And I just want to highlight a few examples. Partners across the city delivered a successful third year of the Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan, which addresses homelessness. The city has welcomed people who have fled the war in Ukraine, supporting children into school, providing employability support and teaching English. We've also played our part in the UK-wide transfer scheme to accommodate unaccompanied asylum-seeking young people. This winter saw the launch of the Open Doors Programme, inviting people to meet others and enjoy activities in a warm and welcoming environment at dozens of community spaces. The council teamed up with partners across the city and with the National Literacy Trust to launch the 10-year Read Dundee Literacy Campaign. We've developed a renewed Take Pride in Your City campaign and continue to invest in environmental improvements, play areas and biodiversity initiatives. Reducing drug deaths continues to be our priority. Dundee Alcohol and Drug Partnership unveiled its new long-term strategy to tackle drug and alcohol-related harm and deaths. It's formed by input from frontline staff and people with lived experience. And we supported the Language Matters Campaign, the challenge of use of stigmatising language when speaking about people who use drugs. The Community Wellbeing Centre, to help improve the city's response to mental health challenges, has been progressed. The centre will be always open and will provide an immediate compassionate response to anyone who needs mental health support. In the past year, over 1,100 children and young people were supported by community mental health and wellbeing services. Finally, Dundee is committed to ending the transmission of HIV by 2030 by signing Paris Declaration to become a fast-track city. We'll be joining a partnership of over 400 patients across the world, working to eliminate HIV transmission and stigma. Although we had to revise the capital plan in November to take account of inflation and construction costs, the plan for 2023 to 2028 will see significant investment in the city, including investment in the school estate, new primary school with tertiary class at the Western Gateway, the East End Campus and Harrow's Academy Extension. Investment in tackling climate change to deliver the council's net zero emissions, putting active travel projects, modernisation of energy systems, investment in the electric fleet, low-carbon projects and the low emission zone. Our updated housing capital plan is focused on maintaining the quality of the stock, delivering energy efficiency projects and increasing the supply of newbuild council housing to meet need. Work also continues to drive improvements, the performance of services, using data from the local government benchmarking framework. The budget being proposed today will ensure that the council remains financially sustainable while using our resources to continue to improve in outcomes for citizens. As in previous years, we have tried to minimise the impact of any savings through prudent financial management and efficiencies, including those received through the council's change in the Future Transformation Programme. By doing so, we've been able to identify base budget savings of £4.9 million, significantly reducing the requirement for more difficult savings decisions and protecting our reserve balances. We've also made provision for employees' pay awards. To deal with cost pressures, support the priorities in the city plan and the council plan and to invest in the areas of service that the public tells are their priorities, we've included in our budget £500,000 to support Dundee's food network, £405,000 to continue our work tackling social inequality, £300,000 for community sport and youth activities, £200,000 for environmental improvements in our communities and £100,000 of economic development support for city events. We'll also be using new money from the Scottish Government, including £428,000 for the further expansion of preschool wheels and £893,000 for whole family wellbeing. We've again published our budget in advance of today's meeting, giving members, employees, trade unions and the public the opportunity to review our proposals in detail. We've been very clear about the challenges we face, but the administration believes that the budget proposals we are submitting today represent the best way to protect public services and maintain our investment in cities' priorities, reducing poverty and inequality, delivering inclusive economic growth and tackling climate change. After lying for the savings proposed this afternoon, our spending proposals for the next year amount to £450 million. The expenditure will provide the resources to deliver vital public services for the people of Dundee, the revenue necessary to fund our plans for investment. And our submitted committee of the administration's 2324 revenue budget includes a 4.75% increase in council tax, in a council tax band D figure of £1,486.43. Now, do I have a second or? Counselor Shaw. Elaine.
Beg your pardon. You got me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you, convener. Can I take this opportunity to thank all the participants today and also the officers? Today is budget day, but as we know, it starts long before today and will continue for the next 364 days. So I know that there will be people certainly around the table that will continue to make sure that the prudence that is looked for today will continue to be delivered. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank you for recognising that there's £450 million makes up this budget. Sometimes we get a little bit caught up in what we're not spending and forget just how much we are spending. Also, in light of the fact that I've now sat and listened to seven of these budgets, I think it's the first time ever, Bailey Sawyers, that you haven't had a cold. So finally, we've got here that we've made it to this point. I would like to second you and hope that today is a successful day for us all. And we can leave here all with the opinion that we're doing the best for the city because I think that's all what we want to do.
You're on mute, convener.
You're on mute, convener. What about that? I'm saying I'm taking the amendments and the orders have been notified in the chat, so I'll call Counselor Duncan to approve the Lib Dem amendment. Craig.
Okay, yeah, thanks very much, convener, and for giving me the opportunity to present our group amendment. And just to say, Counselor Coleman will second me in due course. So first, we'd like to thank officers across departments and in particular in the finance team in corporate services for all the help and support that they have provided to us in putting this budget of ours together. A main theme, unsurprisingly, is that we propose trying to improve the street cleaning staff resource, something we've mentioned several times over the years. We have consistently, year after year, raised this. And in 2023-24, we're proposing rehiring every single street cleaning post in Dundee axed since 2015. That actually comes to some 39 posts. The council having cut the number to full-time equivalent street cleaning jobs from 115 in 2015 to just 76 today. It's quite a telling statistic, I think. We all continue to get many complaints from constituents around and about street cleaning in the city, which unfortunately, I have to say, is simply not as good as it ought to be or indeed residents would wish it to be. The streets we've been staffed with, they do a really excellent job. There's no criticism of them whatsoever. There's simply just not enough of them. And it's been a picture of decline in the staffing resource year after year. And we feel that this needs to be reversed. Not only has the council cut 39 posts, there's an additional 16 vacancies that have not been filled. So with just 60 street cleaners left in post at the moment, staffing levels currently in post are a little more than half of what used to be in post in 2015. Again, that's quite a telling statistic. Our group want a cleaner city, not what are lying around or overflowing Euro bins, dog bins, et cetera. And to achieve this, we need to help existing staff with the load they're already trying their very best to shoulder. And that means adding more street cleaning staff so that we have found the funding to reinstate every single post, as I've mentioned, that's been lost over the last eight years. We're also proposing the creation of new posts in forestry and also animal control and also to add to the community's safety warden and countryside ranger staff resource. We're also proposing an additional £2 million next year for roads resurfacing, a million pounds on pavements resurfacing to properly tackle the state of many footpaths and road surfaces that we, I'm sure all of us, get so many complaints about. A further proposal is to save local-supported bus services, including in my own ward, the 206 service, but also we want to save other services elsewhere in the city. For example, in the West End, Lochie, Curtin, Lawside, The Glens, Millamains, Midcraigie and indeed Cuts to Service 10, all of which would have quite severe impacts upon users and do nothing at all to help drive down carbon emissions and encourage people to use public transport. We're also proposing to save the shelter shoppers' bus and the out-and-about bus service that the administration group intends to end. We feel that this would be detrimental to the elderly folk in particular who rely on these services and would be an unkind and inappropriate thing to remove these vital services for older people. My group colleagues will cover the number of other priorities for us, but we have listened carefully to the issues our constituents are raising and feel our proposals are fair, deliverable, fully costed. And as I say, Counselor Coleman will now second me.
Thanks for that, Craig. Counselor Coleman, Daniel, please.
Thank you, Mr Convener. I wish to second Counselor Duncan and indeed extend my thanks to council officers for the assistance in the drafting of our budget. The Liberal Democrat Group wish to oppose proposal to hike brown bin charges yet again from £45 from, sorry, to £45 from 2024. And our proposal is actually to cut down to £35 to support the recycling effort in Dundee. And this would return the charge to its initial cost when it was first introduced some years ago. We also oppose the administration's group propose increase to the bulky uplifts charge and would aim to cut the proposed charge by nine pound per collection. We surely want to be incentivising the disposal of bulky items appropriately and should be seeking to reduce fly tipping in Dundee. Increasing these charges flies in the face of that aim. We're also strongly against the administration's group proposal to cut 10% off local community regeneration funding. Not only will we oppose this cut, but our budget alternative aims to give each local area an extra £10,000 each specifically for localised costs of living support. There are, however, areas where we will support parts of the administration group's budget. For example, the areas of additional expenditure like support in Dundee's food network. Thank you, Mr Convener, and I'm pleased to second Counselor Duncan.
Thanks, Daniel. I've got Counselor Curtin next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, convener, sir. Our group is also proposing improvements in our city centre and district shopping centres and areas with a 1 million capital for shop fronts, upgrades and other exterior improvements such as lighting, painting, stonework repairs at our city centre, targeting on the Murray Gate and Reform Street. This will complement the existing scheme to help our city development committee for Union Street. And we propose a further 1 million capital to be shared across the five district shopping areas, that's Stobswell, Hilltown, Brody Ferry, Perth Road and Loughy, to undertake further environmental improvements in these local shopping areas. We also want to double the frequency of bus shelter cleaning back to monthly, as it was before the administration's cut last year. And we are determined to see the real environmental improvements in our shopping areas, particularly the city centre. And we are also keen to reduce the parking charges in areas like the Hilltown and Brody Ferry and abolish the West End car parking charges altogether. I'm pleased to support Counselor Duncan and Counselor Coleman, and thank you for giving me the time, convener.
Thanks for that. You went first and next, Fraser.
Thanks indeed, convener. I've got a couple of comments. You mentioned the budget consultation. I do have to say, I had some concerns about the budget consultation because it was a bit of a take it or leave it on what council tax level you wished. In fact, you couldn't actually progress in filling out the consultation online if you didn't go for at least a 3% increase in council tax. And I have had a discussion with the comms team about that because I think really, if we're having a genuine consultation, we should allow the public to say exactly what they want in terms of a percentage increase, not pigeonhole them into a certain level. And I should also say, I was very impressed with the deputation from Cara and Mark in relation to Sistema. We have in our proposals to meet the, what I think Sistema Scotland reasonably expected to have been included in the revenue budget this year. And certainly, it's in the spirit of the original partnership agreement signed in 2016 of £300,000 in 2023-24. We have something that no one else seems to have clicked on to, and that is, you mentioned PEF, convener. And I agree with what you say in terms of the positives that PEF has been able to achieve in our local schools. But the decision from children's and families to use 15%, basically take a slice of PEF away from schools in order to meet the cost of school family development workers, we think is a bad precedent. I've had exchanges with Mr Fleming on that. He's given a very fulsome reply to his credit. But we feel that really it sets a bad precedent. We feel that should be funded from, we're all in favour of school family development workers. We think they actually do an absolutely excellent job, but we would like to see that funded centrally and not a slice of PEF being taken. And we've put back in the funding in order to achieve that. I want to just briefly cover the street cleaning issue because to its credit, and we've left it in, if you like, the administration's putting a sum for unspecified environmental improvements. Labour's done a little bit of the same. We feel very strongly that the staffing resource needs to be increased. And I think something reported to me by constituents recently, because that's how I found out about it. You may be aware that neighbourhood services have actually employed an external cleaning company, William Hamilton Limited, to undertake some street cleaning because there's not the resource there to actually do it ourselves. And I'm all in favour of anything that improves street cleaning. But the bottom line on it is, we need to increase the staffing resource. I'll be briefing finishing. I don't want to reiterate all the issues around competency and legitimacy. I don't want to reiterate all the issues around competency and legitimacy, but the fact is, we have gone for a lower increase than everybody else for a very good reason. It's not something we would repeat year after year. We absolutely get the point about sustainability in the long term, but there is a cost of living crisis. Wages are not keeping pace with inflation, energy bills are soaring, food bills are going through the roof, and the cost of living is a real crisis for so many Dondones, and we are not helping by having very high council tax increases. That's why we supported the Labour proposal on the rents, because we felt that, you know, having no increase this year, frankly, given the crisis that we're in on the cost of living was a sensible thing to do, we feel that should feed through to council tax. It's not something we would do every year, but we think it's really important. And the point is, it's competent, it's legitimate, and in particular, the use of the loans fund principal repayment flexibility is a sensible thing to do in a crisis situation. So with that, I'll be quiet, convener, and I'll thank you for the opportunity to present our budget. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't have thought saddling the city with debt for the next 25 years was sensible, but anyway. Councillor Alexander here, next.
Thanks very much, Bailey Sawyers. A couple of points, I think it's important, I suppose, to address one point that was made earlier, so I seem to have touched a nerve with some of our opposition colleagues in terms of some of the recent press coverage, which I would again reiterate was prior to me receiving any notification that I would have any detail associated with any of your budget proposals, so I think the comments were valid. But let me just say a couple of things very briefly about that. If you care about democracy, you welcome scrutiny from others in advance of the meeting. And giving hours' notice, I was up until half one this morning, as officers will attest to, because I was emailing them at 1 o'clock this morning, poring over the opposition budgets, because I want to do it justice and I want to serve this council effectively. And it's no way to run a council. Now, everything I've just said there, with the exception of being up to half one, are not my words, they're Bailey McPherson's words from November, and that was in reference to the capital plan in which there was a briefing and five days' notice. So I think it's just really important to set the context in which my comments were made. On the substantive item before us, and the concern I have, which I think, again, was alluded to by the questions from my colleagues, it's about the sustainability of this budget. It's, in some ways, easy to look at this as a once-and-done affair. We get the budget over the line, we move on, we deal with other matters over the next 10 months until we have to go through the process again. For the administration, we're looking at what does the next four years at least look like in order to make sure that this city is on an even keel and that we can deliver the collective ambitions expressed by the citizens of the city who we represent and deliver our manifesto in which we were elected on. And my concern about the Lib Dem budget is, I suppose, twofold. One, there is additional, and again, I would agree with some of the comments and certainly agree with the ambition in terms of areas of expenditure, but adding recurring expenditure at a time of depleting budgets, a cost of living crisis, exceptional inflation, construction inflation, capital costs that are eye-watering on projects and we keep seeing those escalate is just not fiscally prudent. And it's at the same time as taking, as you alluded to, convener, one-off expenditure in order to shore up things for a year, which only kicks the can down the road until next year, which creates further problems, and in looking essentially at borrowing for now and will deal with it later. It is no way to run a council, again, as Bailey McPherson has mentioned in November. We need to make decisions that ensure that this council is able to continue to deliver those wider statutory services and support the wider ambition in the city. And I think that this budget, whilst there's some merit in the suggestions contained within it, it creates further areas of risk, it creates further areas of concern, and potentially all it does is store up problems for next year. And instead of looking at perhaps an £18 million reduction in our budget, it might well be 20 as a result of the decisions that are contained within this budget. And for me, looking forward, looking across the whole city, that's an unacceptable position to be putting us in, and it isn't fiscally prudent and it isn't sensible at this point in time. So I'll be supporting you, convener.
No, thanks for that, John. I think you've probably been a bit more diplomatic in your critique of the Lib Dem budget than I might have been, so I'm not wishing to be undiplomatic. I think we'll just go to the vote, please, Willie.
Thank you very much, convener. Okay, the motion by the convener, second by councillor Short, is circulated. The amendment by councillor Duncan, second by councillor Coleman, is also circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Mr. Alexander?
Motion.
Mr. Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell?
Motion.
Mr. Unackler?
Motion.
Mr. Flynn?
Motion.
Mr. Hunter?
Motion.
Mr. Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts? Bailey Roberts? Mr. Rome?
Motion.
Mr. Short?
Motion.
Mr. Smith?
Motion.
Mr. Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
No vote.
Mr. Crookshank?
No vote.
Mr. Finnegan?
No vote.
Mr. McHugh?
No vote.
Mr. McIrvin?
No vote.
Mr. Malone?
No vote.
Mr. Scullen?
No vote.
Mr. Shears?
No vote.
Bailey Wright?
No vote.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Mr. Coleman?
The amendment.
Mr. Creighton?
Amendment.
Mr. Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
No vote.
Bailey Roberts is on the call, so I'm not sure if she's just had a problem getting off mute, perhaps.
She's having some technical difficulties.
I tried to say motion twice.
Okay, thank you very much for confirming that. That's 14 for the motion and four for the amendment. The motion's currently carried, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. If we could move on to the Labour Group amendment, so Bailey Keenan to move, please.
Okay, thanks. To be fair to say that I think it's the worst settlement that local governments received. Having to cut £18 million doesn't bear thinking about, and makes it a very difficult choice for about all. However, you know, that's now £164 million that's been cut by the SNP over the last 11 years. I used to hear a bit of sympathy for, it's only Westminster will get their money from, but I no longer have that level of sympathy and have to burden all these cuts in the direction of the SNP, because they have the tax-raising powers and they've had them for a long time, and only this year they've decided to use them. And this year, of course, they've cried wolf on so many occasions of no more money. You'll have to take it via health, you'll have to get it via somewhere else. And only last week, they managed to come up with £280-odd million, just by reaching down the back of the city, or perhaps reaching down the public cities and tacking their money in the council tax hikes that we're seeing across the country. I think it's a budget that's just delivering cuts. I mean, previously, the SNP have been happy to accept the Tories' cuts and accept the wage restraint that went with it, and the problems that we've got stacking up coming are all around wages, as the section 95 officer kindly explained to the administration earlier. But that you're making, and a lot of the cuts that you're making are making directly in our communities, and the Labour Group's budget looks to address that. We start by looking to put in Dundee contract services and accredited scheme of quality assurance. I think if we'd have had that to start with, the chances of the roof debacle would have been resolved, would have been looking at how we do and how processes are. But then, we had it, but your cuts have got rid of that, and I would want you on to put it back. The big noise in Douglas we heard earlier about the effect that that will have on children, and I think it's worth supporting, given it delivers 20 jobs and it delivers to 500 kids a programme that they thoroughly enjoy. And, you know, you're looking to put in youth diversity work, we're looking to do that later in the budget as well. But I would suggest that in bus shelter cleaning, if you go along in the town and have a look at any of the bus shelters, they're an absolute disgrace and they badly need clean. So we're obviously looking to do as well is to increase that back to once a month, doubling the cleaning regime on that in the hope that it makes a real difference. The people in this town have got to feel comfortable in it, and street cleaning is certainly something that we need to make improvements on, because there's areas of the town that's an absolute midden. And when people are saying Dundee's dead, as you were hearing from the trade unions earlier, it's no surprise when they're seeing it like a tip, and we need to do something to make a real difference to it. So I'm suggesting that we do need to increase the street cleaning, and we need to get along to the Euro bins and make sure that the rubbish below them is cleaned, because it's causing trouble further down the line as some of that moves towards the gullies and starts to block them. We need to have food and warm clothes for people, so we've laid aside £800,000 within the budget to do that. It's a pretty sad reflection that we need to do that, and working poor in Dundee need to go along to food banks. Many of them will be your employees, because we've held their wages down for that land, add in the SNP's austerity measures that they've taken over the years. The other one that we'd like to do is invest money in leisure and culture, and I've tried this a few years.
If you wind up, please, Bailey Keenan.
That's fell on deaf ears. Putting the money in the leisure and culture will safeguard jobs, will make a difference to people, and it will utilise our buildings. They're underutilised at the moment, we need to make a difference. We'd be stirring the money around our own pot when we invest in the people that work for us and make a real difference there. And as opposed to others when it comes to the capital spend, we're looking to make a capital spend, it's a spend to save. It delivers on a zero emission target, and it delivers low-cost energy to the buildings that we put them on, our community centres, the very bit that people are moving round to to keep themselves warm. They're no able to heat their homes, they're in our community centres having a meal. Need to make a difference to these buildings and put the expenditure in there and make them future-proof. I would also say
Bailey Keenan, could you wind up?
I'd also say that we haven't used any repairs, renewals, any additional insurance fund or any Covid recovery money, and there is £39 million, as you heard from officers earlier, in our budget.
So thank you for your extremely constructive suggestions and talking up the city as always. Councillor Crookshank to second the Labour amendment, please. Georgia?
Sorry, I thought I'd taken it off. Thank you, convener. I'm pleased to second the Labour Group's alternative budget as moved by my colleague Bailey Keenan. I've been a member of this council for 11 years, and regrettably, every budget that we have debated and has reluctantly been passed has been about cuts, cuts, cuts. Something that reached over £160 million has been slashed from the Dundee City Council budget in that time, which is a real tragedy for our city and its people. It's been a decorative decay. None of us should take any joy in what we're here to discuss today. Of course, we shouldn't underestimate the severity of the challenges we face right now with cost of living crisis, coupled by Brexit, Covid, and now the Ukraine war. But my Labour colleagues and I didn't come into local politics just to talk about what Dundee cannot afford. Alas, the prevailing undercurrent of the last 10-plus years has been austerity, a political choice packaged up by the Tories in Westminster and handed down by the SNP in Hollywood. Our budget has been cut through to the bone and into the marrow, it's gone too far for far too long. We also recognise that council's options are limited. We believe a better budget is possible, a budget which doesn't punish our communities for political choices they didn't make. The SNP's budget is so concerned with saving money, Labour's budget is focused on saving bikes and services. We would protect £150k spent on lifeline bus services, would keep older, and to save Dondones connected, services that fill the gap where they exist in the core bus network, and they are crucial to supporting social inclusion, economic activity, and environmental benefits. These are priceless and social benefits. If the SNP ripped these buses out of the communities that serve, the way that economic penalties would be far exceeded, would far exceed the sum the SNP think they are saving. We'd protect £141k spent on customer service, for instance, contact across the city. First-person advice is invaluable to people across our communities, from older disabled people who access, to technology maybe limited or non-existent, to younger people navigating new services for the first time who have been more issued by speaking to an actual human being and not just a voice on the phone. We'd protect £75k which the SNP proposed to cut from the waste management fleet, because we stand firmly opposed to any cuts which would only further degrade the public rem with messiest streets. In fact, we propose to introduce a new spending on an enhanced street cleaning programme, plus more spend on reversing that stress to bus shelter cleaning. The budget proposes more than double the amount of new spending in the administrations, and we would limit the council tax increases to 3% instead of 4.75%. We propose more than a million pounds of new spend for leisure and culture in Dundee to help them deliver better proactive programmes for the benefit of children, parents, and many others across the city. Contrast this with the £6 million accounting bill, local taxpayers are fighting to fix the scandalous safety problems in Olympia, a community asset which local people have been deprived of using for years now. The city has lost out on hundreds of thousands of pounds in revenue as a result of its extended closure. On a similar note, we propose more than a quarter of a million for new quality assurance mechanisms to prevent a repeat of the council scandal, the shooting debacle, which squandered £4.5 million on local work. Never again should local government be so cavalier with the taxpayers' hard earned money, especially with tightening belts in every area. If the SNP want to preach financial prudence on budget day, they should practise it every day. We also propose to beat the administration's spending on food security by £79k in the midst of a cost of living crisis, the likes of which hasn't been seen in a generation or more. We need to be bigger and bolder in our actions to respond and alleviate the pressures. Lastly, I wish to respond to the charters made by the leader of the administration about the process for changing this budget. I've already addressed that, so I won't repeat myself. We in the Labour Group engage with a broad coalition of stakeholders such as trade unions, the贫民团, and other community groups, which the SNP didn't dain to do. Instead, they released selective press releases which withheld the full ugly extent of the cuts to our communities. Savings are pure semantics in an SNP press release. Brutal cuts are the reality people will face day to day. We in the Labour Group aim to offer constructive opposition, but there are too many red lines in this budget for us to stay silent. I said it before, and I'll say it again, we are way past the point of crisis point. We've got to step up. The Labour Group's alternative budget is about stepping up for the people of Dundee. Thank you, convener.
Oh, councillor Crookshank, I can't let that go past without connecting the impression you gave about our interaction with the trade unions, because I sat down with trade union reps a week ago and went through every aspect of the budget with them, and the budget proposals were then sent out to them. So don't try and say we didn't interact with their own trade unions. On that, just go straight to the vote, please.
Chair, convener, there's, people have indicated they've got comments to make. Are you saying you're not prepared to hear them?
And when did you indicate?
Well before, it was 17:14.
Myself as well, at 17:15. Just give me a second.
And councillor McHugh has her hand up.
Apologies, because neither of you are appearing in my chat function. So who was first then? Councillor Malone?
Yeah, thank you. I find odd that Bailey Sawyers is attacking the Labour budget Yeah, thank you. I find odd that Bailey Sawyer is attacking the Labour budget as being loading debt onto the city when the SNP policy is that if only we had independence, we would have borrowing rates and powers to fund the stuff that we want. So it seems that councillor Bailey Sawyer has got a contradiction within his political belief and what he's saying in response to the Labour budget. I'll say a second thing as well. I think we're quite right. Every single person on this call wants to see a sustainable Dundee. Everybody. And nobody's ducking away from the responsibilities we all have to look to a sustainable city. But I think that what we have to understand now is that the crisis is now. It's not about forecasting crisis in the future, the crisis is now. The reality is that people are going without food, people are going without heat and now people are going without transport to allow themselves to move about the city. We have a crisis now, not an existential crisis some point in the future that we could maybe put money aside for, we have to support it now. And I think there's quite a difference, a nuance coming from the different parties. And I think the nuance coming from both the Dems, I have to say, and from the Labour party is we have to support communities now because our communities are bleeding. They're bleeding. Having all the different initiatives that Billy Sawyer's talked about and all the committees and all this sort of thing we're going to be setting up for the future, it doesn't address the now. And I really object to Billy Sawyer's comments that anybody that questions this administration is talking Dundee down. I think probably these yellow glasses is what Billy Sawyer saw when he walks about the streets of Dundee. Because he obviously doesn't see the same stuff that I'm seeing when I look in. And he's obviously not speaking to the same people that I'm seeing and speaking to in communities. You talk about filthy streets, unemptied bins, seagulls attacking bags of food and casting it all over the street. And it's not just in our communities, in our schemes. We're seeing it in the city centre. So anybody that pretends that Dundee at present is this kind of panacea of aesthetic purity is detached from reality. And so I've said, I think that, and I believe the administration as well, want to see a sustainable future. I believe a lot of Dems want to see it. I said, we want to see it. We're just looking at it a different way. And what I see is a separation in this one. Is that we are looking to protect and support communities now. We're being offered something in the future that might happen that we can't, that doesn't resolve the scenario and the pictures we have now. I just find it really frustrating as somebody who's a local councillor. And it's not me that's saying the streets of Dundee are filthy. It's the people I speak to. And they're not talking Dundee down because these are the people that built Dundee.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Mullen. Councillor Shears next, Pete.
Thanks, Convena. And I will keep it short. I mean, really, there's no such thing as a perfect budget in the climate. To be honest, I don't think there's such a thing as a good budget in this climate. And regardless of our political persuasions, we all have to present a budget at the moment which carries cuts because of the money that we are given, whether you think that's from Westminster or from Holyrood, I'm sure. There are a lot of well-versed different opinions that we certainly won't be changing each other's minds in the course of a budget meeting. But what I do genuinely believe is that every proposal from every councillor and every party here is made with Dundee first. And we might disagree on how we do it, but I do believe we all act with the best intentions. And the main difference being is where you make those cuts that we are being forced to make. You can take them out of communities or you can take them out of corporate. And I totally take on board councillor Flynn's comments in regards to training. In an ideal world, no one would be cutting training. But we've had a look and we've gone for keep them out of communities. Put some into corporate, which we don't want to do, no one wants to do. And we have made a different choice to the administration. It is an alternative. And one thing I've all mentioned is the council tax rises, which the administration seem determined to disregard as almost irrelevant. But in reality, these are a community cut. The less money that is in people's pockets, the less money is spent in communities. And the less money people have, the more reliant they then become on services, especially at a time like now where wages are squeezed within an inch of their life. And it might be what looks like a small raise week on week, but when you're budgeting for every penny, having less of those pennies is going to be destroying to some people. And for some people, that, what some people would look at as a small raise is an awful lot of money. And when I was first elected, there was a lot of talk about community wealth building and yet to see any demonstration of that. And which I will say is very hard in the current climate, but that's why we have moved for the photo of panels on community centres. That's a good example of community wealth building. Yes, it's spending a bit of money. Yes, it's spending a bit of money in future budgets as well, but that money comes back straight into communities. It means community centres paying less for their energy. It means we become closer to being carbon zero as a city. And it's, it's a horrible situation to be in for all of us. None of us want to be presenting a budget cuts. But I do genuinely believe that our alternative budget is the best proposal for the city. And thank you for the time, Convena.
Thank you, councillor Shears. I've got councillor McHugh next. Dorothy.
Thank you, Convena. I fully support the Labour group amendment, but I want to make a final plea as an East End councillor for the retention of funding to Big Noise. I've received more than 30 emails from families involved in Big Noise laying out in heartwarming detail the positive impacts that this programme has had on their children and on their community. I've also had an email from Peggy Mara, wife of the late Michael Mara and whose name the campaign to bring Big Noise to Douglas was started. She's quite rightly devastated that, as she puts it, Dundee City Council might backtrack on their promise to keep the centre going. You've heard the deputation from those most closely involved. Surely you can be in no doubt about the value that the Douglas community places on this programme. Within the emails that I received, reference was made to the report by officers attached to the administration's budget proposal described by the CEO of Systema Scotland as presenting a highly misleading summary of the University of Dundee evaluation. This report suggested that equivalent outcomes can be achieved through the council's instrumental music service. There really is no comparison here. There is no level playing field. Children and young people from our disadvantaged communities like Douglas have huge impediments to overcome to reach equal outcomes. They need customised and targeted interventions to achieve parity. We need to aspire beyond equality towards equity for these young people. Big Noise is so much more than instrumental tuition. It uses music and nurturing relationships as tools for change. It's a social intervention programme explicitly targeting one of Dundee's most disadvantaged areas and focusing on long-term transformational change for the children, the young people and the wider community. If you really do want our young people in Douglas to be all that they can be, they need enhanced provision. They need Big Noise. The Douglas community deserves Big Noise. I'll leave the last word on this to a nine-year-old cello player from Douglas who wrote, "I'm writing to you to explain how much I love Big Noise. I have learned to play the cello from P3 to P5 and would love to carry on learning this. Big Noise is great for school holiday clubs and after-school clubs. They have given us a lot of healthy snacks and I have made many new friends even from other schools in the area. Please, please don't take our Big Noise away."
Okay, thanks for these comments. Councillor Finnegan next, Jack.
Hi, thank you. I think Dorothy has just actually said a lot of what I was going to say, so I'd just like to echo it. But as a mother of a performing musician who hailed from S I M D area and learned music via YouTube. Um, Dundee has a live music scene that needs to be energised and vibrant, but also needs the communities and to be nurtured. And I think what we've got in Big Noise, Douglas, is the vehicle that it could be sport, it could be any activity, but it's music that's used to nurture this community. And what we should be doing is embracing that and growing it so we could take it to other communities. We then know, I don't think you could compare it to a breakfast club and an after-school club and music tuition because it's, as Mark Concarrad said, it totally envelops everybody that's in it, the families and the children. I had a brand-new granddaughter born yesterday morning. She lives in Douglas. And our 18-month-old big brother loves to bang a drum. Please, when you're looking at this, see the potential of families, the enabling fact that you could do with this funding and share it throughout the town. If we could set it up in Douglas and have the evidence-backed research that comes along with it. It's got staff, it gives people jobs, it grows volunteers, gives them self-esteem and responsible citizenship. Please, just rethink and don't reduce the funding. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for these comments. Unless I've got reading the chat properly, councillor Alexander appears to be the last person to have indicated wishes to speak and he'll be the last speaker in this section.
Not to contradict you, Convena, but councillor Flynn and councillor Hunter both have comments asking to come in after me. And not to take away.
Doesn't work in properly. Okay, on you go then, John.
Thank you very much, Convena. And thanks to colleagues because I think that, you know, for the most part, all members have recognised how difficult this year's budget setting has been. And I think, you know, I would certainly align myself with much of what councillor Shears had to say. And nobody is kidding ourselves that any budget is perfect or there was no pain in any of these budgets. And it's fair to say, when we talk about sleepless nights, that isn't a flippant remark. There has genuinely been sleepless nights in looking at how we deliver a budget that seeks to balance the needs of the citizens of Dundee with the services that we have and also deliver on the aspiration. And again, there is merit in every single budget. But for a number of reasons, I cannot support the Labour budget as it is in front of me. And I'm going to maybe come on to just talk a couple of specific parts. I want to address a couple of comments that were made. So there was reference to the council tax increase and money being in people's pockets. I'd done a calculation at one o'clock in the morning and I had it double-checked just to make sure it was accurate. And which was based upon the last five years' budget proposals by Labour and the SNP. And the sum total of difference as a result of what has been proposed over the last five years is £6.37 per year. So had you been successful in all of your budgets, then the difference between yours and ours would be £6.37 per year. And we're talking about 12 pence per week. So actually, the reality is we're very much aligned on some of those issues. Because there's a reality in terms of the cumulative effect of the council tax and the need to use that to balance the budget. Beyond that, there's some areas of concern, as I see it, within the budget proposals as well. And some of them were referenced in the conversation that was had earlier or the questions that were asked of officers. So, you know, we've heard much of the narrative over the last 18 months in particular around maintenance and repairs. And I find it somewhat ironic perhaps to quote Alanis Morissette that there is a suggestion to cut repairs, maintenance, cyclical maintenance budgets at the same time as saying that they're going to invest £50,000 to prevent the occurrence of costly defective works. Well, surely if you don't have a repairs and maintenance budget at the same level, then you might well run the risk. I've seen the recurrence. There's also cuts to other areas. And again, my colleagues have referenced some of these in terms of training and the impact that will have on staffing, some one-off savings. And again, all that does is kick the can down the road. And I don't think that's a sensible approach at this time. And when councillor Malone was talking, it was very reminiscent actually of councillor Mara's comments the month before we went into the first lockdown, where he told us that it was not just raining, it was pouring outside. And lo and behold, it wasn't pouring because we didn't know what was round the corner. And the point I make is simply that we cannot continue to drive down reserves to borrow our way out of problems without trying to at least seek any equilibrium or a balance in all of those suggestions. I've got a couple of other things, I suppose, and I'll caveat them in a moment because I'm sure they'll touch the nerve. But the proposal to only raise council tax by 3% is virtue signalling and short-sighted. It's virtue signalling by proposing 3%. It just looks like you want to be below us. And some of the proposals are more about popular headlines than they are a serious approach to balanced budgets. Now, can I just say something? I can see councillor Malone shaking his head. That's not my comments. That's not my words. That's actually councillor David Ross, the leader of Fife Council, the Labour leader of Fife Council. And there is a consistent narrative that I'm seeing across Scotland because there's a realisation that we're all facing the same challenges. And it's worth remembering that on current forecasts, we'll face huge financial challenges over the remaining life of this council, requiring year-on-year savings and increases in council tax. And those savings that aren't taken this year may well have to be taken in future years. Again, that's not my quote, that is councillor McCabe, Labour leader of Inverclyde Council. So the point I am making here is the administration have to look at the next four and a half years to ensure that we are on a sure footing to ride our way through the storms that we're facing. Now, nobody can, I think, criticise the work of the administration on things like tackling poverty and inequalities. We've not only been up front and centre, but we've led the way. We introduced the Drug Commission, we introduced the Fairness Commission. I personally held three cost of living summits, utilised additional money from within the council and leveraged in further resources over the winter months to ensure a quarter of a million pounds of support in addition to the multi-million pound support that we had already announced, was pushed out into our communities to support those most in need. So this administration is very clear on what our priorities are. Our priorities are about our communities. It is about individuals. It is about challenging and supporting people through this cost of living crisis. But we also need to recognise that leadership sometimes means making difficult decisions in the best of intentions, with the best of intentions, should I say. And that is absolutely true when you consider the contents of our budget. This is about recognising those challenges, ensuring that we do not saddle the very generation that has been talked about today with even greater levels of debt when we currently are in a position where the capital plan is overheating, I suppose is best description. And I believe our budget seeks that, to strike that balance and does strike that balance. It isn't perfect. I wouldn't pretend it was. And but it certainly goes a long way. And just very briefly, Convena, one final comment, which is on Systema. And I really want to recognise this because I don't have a bad word to say about that project whatsoever. I think it is a really great project and I've seen the value of it. I've seen it firsthand on a number of different occasions. And again, there were no easy decisions whatsoever in this budget in seeking that balance and looking forward about where we need to prioritise our resources and where we can realise the biggest benefit to the biggest cohort of the population within Dundee as well. And it's against all of that backdrop that I believe that our budget does strike the balance, as I've said. And that's why I'll be supporting you today, Convena. Thanks.
Thanks, John. We've got councillor Flynn next. Mark, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. It's difficult to disagree with anything that councillor Alexander's actually said because it kind of covers most of what I was going to cover in here anyway. And I think I'll take on what councillor Shear's saying. I think it's really important to say Dundee first. And I think that's what this administration is actually doing. We're putting Dundee first in everything we think about and the people of Dundee. And I have to say, before we go into this part and follow the deputations, hearing the statement of Dundee is dying really concerned me because Dundee isn't dying. We're actually working hard to make sure Dundee moves forward. And I think to say things like Dundee is dying, that rhetoric does not help anybody in the city. We're looking to bring jobs to the city. We're doing quite well at that. We're looking to invest in the city. We're looking to improve our city centre. We've just taken, just approved, if you recall, the city centre strategic draft planned. And we're actually doing some work from there. And we're working, we've actually got some projects actually taking place currently as pilots. And I think we've got to make sure we're all overcoming. Dundee is no different from any other city in Scotland, if not UK. We're all trying to overcome the issues caused by Covid, Brexit and now the cost of living crisis. And fundamentally, we're talking about energy policy, food policy. This is all failures of Westminster governments not having any energy policy or food policy to protect the people of the UK. And Scotland feel weak as it comes to energy. We've got the problem in Scotland where we actually use more energy because of the temperatures in Scotland. And therefore, what happens? We don't see any benefits from the UK. They're quite happy to raise caps on fuel costs, et cetera. So the pressures are put on every single one of us by failures elsewhere. I've heard with regards to UPVs or PV, sorry, on buildings, I think we should. I think we should remind everybody that we're actually doing that currently. We've actually got policies and programmes in place. We're actually putting PV systems at the Hardest Kings Park, DCA and Menasell House, all planned for this year. We've also got the Invest the Save projects where we're doing non-domestic energy efficiency, three phases of various types of energy conservation. We're actually putting PVs on nine properties in addition to that. And I think sometimes we've got to address what we're actually taking on board, the climate challenges. Very important to every single one of us here. And this administration, we take that really seriously. If you look at our EVs, we're way ahead of the other councils within the country. We're stepping that up. We're making sure we actually continue to improve that. And I think talking Dundee down does not help. I think we've got to look at it first. I think councillor Shears, I said, I'll beat myself because I'll cut it short here, Dundee first. And that's what we should all be considering when we're actually making any decisions. And it's all to the benefit of the people of the city. And that's what we're aiming to do. Thank you, convener.
Thanks, Mark. I think councillor Hunter is, my chat is working properly, is the last person to have put a notification in. So it's Stuart, hear from you, and then we'll go to the vote, please.
Okay, thank you, convener. And I think it's important before I say anything else, I think it's important to actually thank officers for all their hard work putting this budget together, which I don't think everybody has commented on. Because this isn't easy for them either to try and put a budget together through these challenging circumstances. And, you know, councillor Alexander talked about sleepless nights. I know that's been the same for officers as well. So I really appreciate all the hard work that they've put in on the budget over the last few weeks and months. And I think it's important that we all recognise that. Earlier on, I think it was councillor Crookshank said that, you know, we always talk about, you know, there's always negative things we're talking. And, you know, there is a lot of things that are coming out of our budgets. And that's clear when we have the savings that we have to make. But I don't think it's always recognised some of the good things that we're doing as well. And I did have a list, convener, and you beat me to the punch in your remarks because a whole list of things that I was going to talk about that is happening in children and families, you mentioned. And I think it's important that we recognise there's a lot of good work going on in the city. And that is sometimes a bit disappointing, I think, for our schools and our staff. Now, when the good things happen, there are often a lot of silence from a lot of people who've been commenting today. And we don't hear them talk up the good things that go on in our schools. And that really, I think, is something that we should focus on. And before I come to the reason why I decided to come in and make a comment, you know, the reality we're facing today is that if we accept the Labour budget, we're going to face savings in the future that will be deeper and more savage than what we are currently facing and what we will potentially currently face in the next few years. And that will do more damage to our services. It will do more damage to our staff. There was talk earlier on about having to make sure that we finance a pay deal in the future. I don't understand how taking recurring costs on one-off budgets is going to help us deliver a pay deal in the future. And it's actually going to make sure that some of the significant improvements that this administration has made will be much more difficult to achieve. But the reason I came in, convener, is I was really disappointed when we were discussing Systema. And I agree, Systema is a good project and a lot of good work is going on there. But it was almost a comment about instrumental music service was kind of made of, oh, oh, they'll not be able to deliver that. Well, our instrumental service does deliver quite a bit in this city. A million pounds of our budget and we see double the national average of young people playing musical instrument. Quite a bit of that is the decision that this administration took to ensure that music tuition was free long before it was done nationally. So I think a little bit of credit to our instrumental music service would not go amiss because I've seen firsthand the amazing work they do and a lot of things that have been talked about today, they've been doing for a number of years in communities right across the city. And it doesn't get recognised often enough. So I think, convener, I think it's important that whatever we do today and whatever decisions we take, we ensure that the staff who do an amazing work across the city, especially in our schools, get that recognition. And that's one of the reasons why I'll be supporting this budget, convener. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart, for finishing on these positive words about some of our services. Willie, if we could move to the vote, please.
Thank you, convener. The motion by the convener, seconded by councillor Short, is circulated. The amendment by Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor Crookshank, is also circulated. Convener?
Motion.
Mr Alexander?
Motion.
Mr Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Curdell?
Motion.
Mr Olnackla?
Motion.
Mr Flynn?
Motion.
Mr Hunter?
Motion.
Mr Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Dobbs?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr Rome?
Motion.
Mr Short?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr Smith? Mr Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan? Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Thank you, councillor Crookshank?
Amendment.
Mr Finnigan?
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Malone?
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen?
Amendment.
Councillor Shears?
The amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
No vote.
Councillor Coleman?
No vote.
Councillor Creighton?
No vote.
Councillor Duncan?
No vote.
Bailey Scott?
No vote.
It gives you fourteen for the motion and nine for the amendment. The motion's currently carried.
Thanks for that, Willie. Now, we have noticed an amendment from Bailey Scott, but Roger will keep me right if I get this wrong. There's no indication of a secondar. I'm assuming that amendment falls and that is the end of the business. But your correct interpretation?
In terms of standing order, thirty, paragraph two, an amendment which is not seconded is not put to the meeting but will be recorded in the minutes if the mover so requests.
Can we clarify firstly whether Bailey Scott has a secondar?
Well, you won't know if I have a secondar or not, convener, until you ask the meeting whether I have a secondar. So I should be allowed to move my amendment and then you ask for a secondar. And if there's no secondar, it doesn't go to the vote.
Well, I don't think so. I think everybody's seen your amendment, Bailey Scott, so.
All right, so I'm getting the opportunity to speak to my amendment like every other group's had the opportunity to speak to theirs.
Oh, you don't have a secondar, so.
I might have a secondar, convener. You don't know until I've moved my amendment.
Convener?
Yes, Bailey Keenan?
Convener, I'm not prepared to vote for councillor Scott, but I'm prepared to hear him. So let's say he's got a secondar.
So a secondar who's not going to vote for him?
That's what you've got, but he's getting to have his say.
And I think, thank you, Bailey Keenan, I think you're interpreting the advice from Mr Many wrongly. He did say that it wouldn't go to a vote. He didn't say I wouldn't have the opportunity to move it.
Well, Bailey Scott, if you wish to prolong the meeting, do so.
No, I don't wish to prolong the meeting, convener, but I wanted to give them the same opportunity as every other member of the council has had to make their say and to establish why they want to move particular things in their budget.
So, where do you go?
Right, well, can I start by thanking Francois and Paul from the finance team for all the help they gave me in producing this budget? It's really hard going as a sole councillor to come up with budget proposals, so I'm grateful for their support. I've been a Dundee councillor for a long time. And when I was first elected, the debate at budget meetings was about the profligacy of council spending. But in more recent times, it's been about what services had to be cut to ensure the continuation of essential services. And that's just not sustainable. Scottish government needs to invest in local government to allow council heads of service to confidently make long-term plans without having to firefight every year. The Scottish government's own information service shows that local governments' budgets have significantly lagged behind the growth of the Scottish budget. So I think there needs to be a fair funding mechanism for councils so they receive a set proportion of the Scottish government's budgets each year in the same way that Scotland receives funding from the UK government. Turning to my amendment, I brought forward suggestions, as the other groups have, to try and improve some of the services that I know are important to local residents and they're raised with me on a regular basis. I'm looking for three million pounds for road and footway reconstructions. Only a tiny fraction of the roads that need to be repaired are attended to in any year and that needs to be improved. And I want to also reinstate the unadopted asset programme. I think that's unfinished business and that should never have been dropped from the capital plan. And like the other groups, and you've heard the arguments for the need for additional street sweepers and animal control officers, I frequently get complaints about the amount of litter and debris in the streets and the full litter bins and dog bins that go for weeks without being emptied. And I think we need to provide the operatives to the environment department to allow them to go on top of that. I'm also asking for additional gully cleaning and I provide the money for that. The street gullies used to be cleaned twice a year. Now they're cleaned every two years. And I think that contributes to the localised flooding that we've seen in recent months across the city. And I've also made provision for the continuing funding of Big Noise at Douglas. And you heard from Cara and Mark this afternoon about the positive impact that that programme continues to have. And I have to say, convener, because we only got sight of your budget motion today, I really had thought that you were going to pull the rabbit out of the hat and allow that funding to continue. And I'm really surprised that you haven't done that. And I also don't think there should be increasing the brand bin charge and the special collection charges. I think that has an impact on fly tipping and you can walk around any area of Dundee where there are euro bins and you can see saties and white goods sitting there and not being collected. In respect of your savings, I think you need to look again at removing the registered and supported bus services. I was at the community meeting this morning before coming along to the budget meeting and real concern was raised about how that would leave certain parts of the community without a bus service at all. And you heard from the officers this afternoon, I asked a question, that it's very unlikely that they'll be able to liaise effectively with the bus operators to fill that gap. We also heard from Maggie and Alison this afternoon about the impact that creating, turning Dundee House and the district housing offices into contact centres rather than drop-in centres. And I think that members of the public should be allowed to drop into these offices at the time and day that they need to do that, to have their concerns dealt with. And before we move totally to a digital and a telephony-only contact, we need to make sure that we've got the hybrid working patterns correct because I continue to get complaints about calls to the council being unanswered and messages not being passed on. So before we move away from having customer-facing facility, we need to get all those issues sorted. And I think the community regeneration funding should remain as it is. Our communities know best what's needed for their areas and we should allow them to make decisions on where that money should be spent. My funding proposals, as in the other groups, in part are funded by taking advantage of the loans fund principal repayment flexibility. And in dire financial need, why wouldn't we maximise all the funding streams available to us? And I believe in these difficult times, council taxpayers shouldn't be asked to fill the financial void caused by the lack of adequate funding from the Scottish government. So my amendment keeps the council tax increased to three percent. So inclusion, conclusion, convener, I've accepted your growth proposals as they have merit. And I hope that you would agree that my proposals do have merit. And perhaps as we go forward, you might look again about whether some of these things can be addressed. And as you know from the start of this discussion, convener, that I have no secondar. And hopefully Bailey Keenan will. But if I don't have a secondar under terms of the standing orders, could I ask for the details of my amendment to be included in the council minute?
Certainly happy for that. I'm quite surprised, I would have to say, that, given councillor Shears and councillor Tolland brought a motion to the meeting three days ago about trade unions' right to strike, that you saw fit to quote trade union delegation who came here today, but that's by the by. Mr Many, can you advise me here? We've got, Bailey Scott's moved his amendment. Bailey Keenan, the leader of the Labour group, has indicated he will second him but won't vote for him. So do we have to go to a vote here or?
I would suggest that now that Bailey Scott has moved his amendment, Chair, you ask Bailey Keenan to confirm whether he does intend to second.
Bailey Keenan?
I don't second.
On that basis, convener, there being no secondar, the amendment cannot be put to the meeting. But Bailey Scott has requested in terms of standing orders that it should be recorded in the minutes, which officers will ensure is done.
Yes, perhaps. Wouldn't we reduce standing orders, Mr Many? And I'm not expecting our reactions as today that if people indicate they're going to second someone, they actually, that's counted as a vote for it. But I don't expect.
I don't know why you have to be difficult about this, convener. It's pretty straightforward. Every councillor should have the opportunity to speak at a meeting, whether they've got a secondar or not. And really, you should have just let the business run.
Bailey Scott, I'm chairing the meeting and please don't interrupt. Thank you. And I think that's all the business. So on that rather shouty episode, we'll close the meeting and everybody can get away and talk of blood sugar, I think. Thank you all very much for your attendance.
That's convener.